All right, why don't we go ahead and get started. Dave Snyder is at another city-related meeting, so he's not going to be joining us. I believe it's on a transportation issue, so he'll be joining us a bit late. And he is at MBTC tonight.
Mayor Baruch, members of council, let me just talk briefly about some of the key things on the agenda for tonight. We will provide an overview of the Development Services Department budget, and then from there, Jim Snyder will present that, and then Bill Hicks will come forward to present the Public Works departmental budget. That will include the stormwater utility budget, and we want to provide an update on our town hall meeting last night and our meeting with the church leadership this afternoon and discuss that budget and some thoughts on that. And then from there, we would talk about the public works elements of the CIP, and those include transportation, and they include facilities. I've asked Tony Jones to join us for the facility discussion. She's aware of the other items that we'll do first, so she'll get here, you know, sometime after eight o'clock to participate in the facilities discussion. And then lastly, if it's the council's pleasure to have some preliminary discussion about expectations for the next two meetings and our process for our markup and how we set up the final decisions for this budget. We have scheduled two work sessions after this one, next Thursday and then the following Monday. And that following Monday, which is when final markup was set to occur, we're missing the mayor and the vice mayor for that meeting, so we'll have a discussion about scheduling and about how to handle that procedurally and schedule-wise. So those are the major items on the agenda for tonight. With that introduction, let me ask Jim Snyder to provide an overview of the Development Services budget.
Mr. Mayor, members of council, thank you very much for the opportunity to present the Development Services budget. If you would please turn to page 170 in your budget book, there is a description of our department and an organizational chart. And basically, we are a people-intensive group with 14.81 FTEs. The various pieces are planning, zoning, building, safety. Those are coordinated by our Development Services counter, which is the place where all of the zoning, planning, building inspections, and other permits come through the city for processing, as well as a number of public works-related permits. So that's a busy place up on the third floor of the West Wing. We have been during the last year fortunate, thanks to you, to have two new planners, and we have been successful, I think, in utilizing those planners. One is a GIS and planning specialist who we hired, who completed the first small area plan. That was the North Washington Street Plan, which was adopted by the Planning Commission and the City Council. And we are presently working on the South Washington Street Plan, one of the opportunity areas. And at the end of this presentation, I'll have a copy for you of the draft plan that's been developed, which we'll be unveiling at a public meeting on the 27th of April prior to having a work session with council and bringing it before boards and commissions for comment, review, improvement, and hopefully eventually adoption. We then will be working on the city center plan with a kickoff on June 1st. So I think we're well on our way on the small area planning, and thanks to you all for the staff that has made that possible. We also have hired Lauren Bruce, who is helping us on the comprehensive, help us get our comprehensive plan update done by allowing us to have a senior staff person, Elizabeth Perry, begin to focus more on comprehensive planning, and she is working with us and the Planning Commission on a chapter-by-chapter review of the comprehensive plan. And so far, we've gone through several chapters with the commission in work sessions. We'll be working on updates of those throughout the year and then trying to pull those all together in an updated comprehensive plan, which will reside more on the web, although there certainly will be the ability of paper copies, and people will be able to access important plans and documents through that, through the web, including the small area plans, the PED plan, or other important studies that this, the city has done. We have been very busy in the zoning office, in the plan review office, the building safety office. One of our major efforts this past year has been to change the way we do a commercial review of tenant fit-outs, working with economic development, zoning, and building safety, and with public works. We've created a prioritization system so that we can focus on any vacant commercial space that is being worked on for tenant fit-out, and we're giving those, identifying them, giving them priority. So those have been helpful to us in getting places like 24-Hour Fitness open, or a number of the restaurants and commercial businesses that have filled some of the vacant commercial spaces, including the 101 Anandale Road building that was burned out and is now being filled with new businesses. So we think that approach has helped us work more cooperatively with our fellow departments and resulted in getting those businesses into those spaces. So we're going to continue trying to improve that process, and also, we're doing a little bit of work on electronic plan review that we hope to do more of in the future. In terms of building safety, plan review, we will be looking at a number of plans possibly coming through the city for review. And our activity, if you turn to page 178, there has been, we have had a lot, I'm sorry, that's, excuse me, it's the 176, you'll see the budget items. We have had an uptick in activity, which is reflected in license fees and permits increases. I would note that one of our revenue lines is down, and that is the, reflects the $350,000 grant for light rail study, which was carried in our budget and is not in this present budget. Again, we're basically people-intensive. We staff the Planning Commission, the Citizens Advisory Committee on Transportation, the Historic Commission, which we took on this year, the HARB, the A, the Architecture Advisory Board, the BZA, and others. And so we have a lot of interaction with ads, staffing, getting paper out, notices out, et cetera. So that's a very intensive kind of operation. We also initiated the effort to do the community code inspection, and we've been working with both commercial and residential property owners to try to deal with chronic problems and resolve those as best we can. In terms of our unmet needs, we did identify the need for administrative assistant that would help us with the paperwork, the scheduling, the notifications for the various, all the work that we are doing, and also looking at the possibility of someone who could help us on the counter. Recently, we had an employee who was injured and has been out of, out of the city service for an extended period of time in recovering from his injury, and we found that we had to close the office somewhat to, at certain times, to catch up with the scheduling and paperwork. We have filled that with a temporary help, and we're back open full-time, but it does say to us that if we get busy and we lose a key person, it's difficult to fill that void. So that's an unmet need that we had identified. With that, I wanted to again thank the council for approving the planners. I think we've made good use of them. Hopefully, you all will feel the same. If you have any questions for me, I'd be happy to try to answer those. Thank you.
All right, council members?
Thank you. Hi, Jim. Usually, we talk about higher-altitude things, so this is more down in the weeds than normally, but since your office does do so many of these labor-intensive projects, as you say, I just had a couple of questions. One is the question that recurs when someone is pulling a permit to do an improvement on their house, let's say. That goes through your shop, right?
Yes.
And can you explain to me and everyone else the process by which that information, that permit's been pulled and that work of significance is being done on a property, finds its way over time and hill and dale to the assessor when the time comes to assess the value of that property? How's that process work?
Excuse me. Well, it does go through a considerable amount of review in terms of the plan review people, if there's grading involved or other land disturbance, that will go through public works, including a possible Seabird hearing. It'll be looked at by the zoning office. If there is a certificate of occupancy inspection, once that is finally done, that notice will go on the MUNIS system, and then that should make that available as a completed project that the assessor would pick up in terms of knowing that the project has been completed. We also, on the commercial side, again, once you finish all the final inspections and do the certificate of occupancy approval, should show up on the system as a completed project and ready to go. I don't know the, I can't tell you the exact precise place where that lights up in their database, but I believe it's through our MUNIS system and his monitoring of our permit process.
Okay, I mean...
And the manager may, or Mr. LaConde may have a better, more complete answer on that.
We don't have to go into painful detail tonight, but it does come up often enough as a question that, the way you put it, is actually, yes, there are a bell that rings, a flag that pops up on somebody's desk in the assessor's office that says, hmm, those folks have done $100,000 worth of work, might take a look, might see what's going on there and in the neighborhood.
I would just add, the way the law is that the assessor reassesses property upon the issuance of the CO or upon completion of the work, and the assessor sends out a supplemental assessment for the property owner. And so for the major projects, that can be very significant, but for all the individual homeowners, they get a supplemental when they do an addition or an improvement as well. Sometimes that supplemental, particularly for the small homeowners, it might lag for a little while. You might not get that supplemental immediately, but you will eventually get it, and the city does get the revenues for the improvements that's made.
Okay. Thanks. Walking by, finally turning to another question, walking by one of the, you know, half dozen new yogurt shops, which is opening in the city the other day underneath the bike bridge, I just looked at the permits on the window and the expense involved in getting those permits and sort of added them up in my mind and presumed that everyone who opens a facility like that, restaurant or storefront of some sort, is generating that kind of permit-fee activity. Is that, how's that factored in? I mean, I'm sure it shows up in here somewhere, but is that like an area that we can track more closely and anticipate growth or see diminishment in over the course of a year?
Well, it does show up, for example, on page 176, where we're showing license fees and permits. You'll see for FY14, we're looking at growth there, and that's projects that have come in or we anticipate coming in, but it's fairly conservatively estimated because we're not assuming that projects that are in the pipeline are going to be approved. Ultimately, our MUNIS system, where the permits are also entered and checklists and permissions are given, has a financial component where the value of permits are, can be collected, and then those are used by the finance office to make estimates as to what the future will hold, or to look at quarter-by-quarter how the activity is. Mr. LaConde, I think, can probably give you a more complete answer about how they use that, but we're very cognizant of knowing that the fees that come through, you know, are part of the lifeblood of the city's financial system, and then, of course, the revenue that comes from actually having open businesses.
As barometers of economic activity, I guess, is the budgetary reason I'm asking this question. I mean, obviously, one yogurt shop is not a city going to make, but if you have a number of those openings across the city in a fairly concentrated period of time, my question is, you know, are we picking that up in time for it to be useful to us as we go through the budget year?
Well, as you can see, by looking at your FY13 adopt and then your FY14, that we are looking at it. And when it goes up, we try to make sure that we come up with an estimate that's practical because it is cyclical, and you don't want to be overestimating and say, oh, we're going to grow. And again, Jim comes to us, we sit down, and we talk about the number that his folks come up with in his office, and then we look at it, and usually, I'll trim it back. That's what you have here.
I mean, one of the things, too, is on the commercial side, I think we've seen a lot of filling of vacant spaces. That is an indication of, you know, a general uptick in the economy because we had a lot of space sitting there kind of unfilled. So, you know, part of that is the general improvement of the economy in this area and people being more willing to take chances. Of course, commercial businesses, hopefully, they'll all be successful. Getting them in quickly helps that, but, you know, ultimately, they have to, the marketplace will decide how they do. So hopefully, they're all successful. We're certainly trying to work with them, as is economic development, to get them in quickly so they're not churning dollars.
Right, yeah. I recall an example, when one of the other yogurt shops was trying to open, you know, before the holidays, where Becky and you, and I think I was in that email chain, were moving things so that they could get open before the holidays. Okay, I think the other questions I have are really better put when we get around after the budget to the process of talking about Seabird and, you know, applications for development on split lots and all that, because they really have more to do with process transparency. So I think I'll hold those for later. So thanks, I think that's all for now.
Anything else? All right. Thank you, Jim.
Yeah, I have a question, too.
Jim, let me ask you, one, do you see any room where the city could shift cost to new development? For example, maintenance of street trees, inspection costs for, you know, BMPs and storm filters and things like that, where it's basically either a cost that shifted directly to the developers or reimbursement or something like that?
Well, we have been, we're internally talking about the question as, about maintenance of streetscape, particularly in terms of these large projects that are coming through. And that's, to some extent, a policy decision, and it's also what are the standards of materials that are built. The city's done a very good job of maintaining the streetscape that it has, has a very attractive public presence. You don't want to lose that. It may be possible to do, have that kind of thing done, but it would need to be careful looked at and make sure you got high quality that could be maintained, and that there was a commitment of the folks who are going to maintain it to do a good job. But it's an internal discussion, too, in terms of the roles, ultimately staffing, that kind of thing. And stormwater, that's a whole big issue for public works that they're working on, and you all are considering. It's an interesting question, certainly something we think about as we try to look at projects.
I would encourage you to try to really find ways to do that because the recurring cost, most developers have an incentive to do, you know, for example, have a nice streetscape. It's just as much in their interest, if not more, to have a nice streetscape in front of their building as it is for the city as a whole. So I think there are costs that we could shift to developers and development, and I don't, I think a lot of them probably wouldn't mind that. I know I've heard from some people through the chamber that they're not particularly satisfied that they can't maintain some of the landscaped areas in front of the businesses. And so I would strongly encourage you to take a look and see if there are ways that we could save some money and also continue to have high-quality services, including landscaping, et cetera. Let me also ask you about fees for permits and the like. How do those compare here to other jurisdictions? In other words, particularly on the commercial side?
Well, we did an update a couple of years ago to try to bring fees up to be more in parity with other jurisdictions, and that's, I guess, two years ago, we did the Chapter 15 update. We are going to be looking at some small changes to the fee structures, particularly on some of the fees that are felt to be nuisance fees for smaller businesses and see if those can be eliminated. I think we're competitive to get directly to your question, and we want to stay competitive, but it's, one of the things we'll have to look at is what have others done as they go through their budget process, and how do we compare? We are internally with Cindy Mester and Bill Hicks, looking at the potential for a technology fee, to research that and see if that could help us modernize and streamline some of our processes and retention of plans and data, but that needs to be carefully done. So we're hoping to learn from others as to, have they done that, and how would, how could we best do it? A number of places have that kind of a fee that they're, that they've used to streamline and go more electronic and less paper, but it needs to be done well. So we're working on a cooperative effort to check with engineering architectural firms and other jurisdictions as to how that's going and how we can learn from that and possibly come back later in the year to the council with a proposal to add something like that with a clear indication of what the steps would be to implement it. If the money were collected, how would it be spent? What would the positive outcomes be?
Okay. One last question. You had mentioned preparing for all these different meetings. I mean, how does that go as far as staff time goes, preparing for the various meetings you have with us and others? I mean, is it something where a significant amount of time is spent in preparation and attending various meetings?
It's a ton of time. I mean, it's, you know, and staff does it willingly, but the wide, the large number of meetings, their length, getting set up for them, prepping for them. For example, if Deborah G., who carries a lot of groups, weren't on our staff, we would be really in bad shape. You have a lot of people who've done kind of extraordinary work in that area. It's a lot of effort, and of course, that, you have comp time that results from that where people need to use, and so it has an impact on the workday, if you will.
I mean, I, for one, would welcome, if you have any ideas on how to streamline things because I hear you. You know, I mean, you guys don't need, you need to be focused on your work and not necessarily kind of saying the same things, meeting after meeting. So if you have suggestions about how to streamline the process, I certainly see faces in the audience I've seen already this week, and, you know, would welcome to try to work with you guys, at least for myself.
The manager instituted an effort this year to look at a number of internal things that we might work on, and one of those has been looking at improving work processes and streamlining things. So internally, as a leadership group, we're working on that, and I think one of our tasks is to ask the various subgroups that the city has, do you have ideas about how we could have fewer meetings or have, be more effective in our use of time? So that's, that's an effort we'd like to undertake once we get past the budget, to get out there and ask those questions. Ask folks who are involved on the citizen side, as well as staff, are there ways we could do equally good work with maybe fewer meetings or streamlining the meetings? So there may be some good ideas the citizens have on that front.
Once you find out, let us know. Thank you much.
All right. There's nothing else, let's move on to the next.
Hey, can I ask a Dave Snyder question? I feel like if he were here, he would ask about small area plans, don't you think, probably? Yeah, I think so. So can you tell us you'll do two new small area plans in the coming year, as you've, I think, pretty well done, too, this year?
Well, we have a draft, which I would like to leave copies of for the council members, because this is, we'll be unveiling this or a subsequent version on April 27th for the public, and we're going to start city center. So we would hope to finish that in the fall or before the end of 2013. There is some work in this plan looking at the land use implications of South Washington, North Washington, city center, and we have projects, of course, going forward. So I would hope we could finish the third plan before the end of 2013, and then perhaps pick the next area and then initiate that. One thing I would mention, we had not identified before, but we will need to do some area planning for the, assuming the city residents approve sale of the water company, and we have the boundary adjustment. We have a large area that's unplanned, unzoned in the city where the schools are, and that will need planning attention and strategies. And I would say also that our planner, who did the small area plans, did a lot of weekend work on both the CIP, the boundary adjustment maps, looking at different scenarios, the city hall renovations. There's a lot of kind of extra work that was done because we had someone who was skilled in doing those kinds of things. So we've been able to do some mapping and graphic projects that have been helpful for the city, and notably, the boundary adjustment mapping and scenarios that some of you saw as you were considering those options earlier in the year.
All right. Thank you, Jim.
I'm glad to be here before you tonight to talk about the FY14 proposed budget for the Department of Public Works. It is found on page 120 of your playbook. The Department of Public Works does a lot of core governmental services. Core competencies are found in Public Works. We deliver services like engineering and construction oversight, that's for our CIP program, for private development oversight through the site plan process, as well as under construction. We collect solid waste curbside and at our recycling facility and several events. We continue to have one of the very highest recycling or diversion rates for that solid waste service in the state of Virginia. We maintain our highways, our streets, and our sidewalks. This includes all the appurtenances associated with those, including bridges and retaining walls, repaving those surfaces. We manage our urban forests and all of the green spaces in the cities, including areas in the park aside from athletic fields. We maintain a fleet. That fleet serves both public works as well as public utilities and other areas in general services and the schools. We maintain a storm sewer system, which we have talked about at length and will continue to talk about this evening. And we maintain our city buildings, and I think that's about 160,000 square feet of space that we maintain. In the budget, we came in, as the guidance was asked of us, at a 3.2% increase outside of salaries. We did that except for fuel, and fuel is a pass-through cost where all of the departments who use vehicles pay for fuel. That price has gone up over time. In 2011, it was $345,000. So we got a, we have a budget amendment that you guys passed this last year to purchase more food, more fuel, food for our vehicles, and we put fuel in at $350,000 in FY14, and so we are beyond that 3.2 marker. We have, we, there, if you look across the board, however, you won't see that each of our cost centers have risen equally, up to 3.2. Some have stayed very flat, and actually, some have gone down. And this is to take a limited pot of money and ensure that we are spending it on our highest priority areas. Every year, our contracts have gone up. The cost of fuel goes up, but as well, our cost for contractors, the cost of our supplies goes up. And as our budgets have stayed more or less flat, we've had to make this up in other areas. So we looked very hard at each of our cost centers coming in this year to try and make sure we were putting our money on our highest priority areas. I mentioned a couple of things that have caused us to move in different directions in here. One is that we put more money into our traffic signals and signs budget area. This is, we maintain 26 signals throughout the city. They, some are very old, some are about 30-plus years old. Typical wiring on these facilities has a lifespan of about 30 years. We continue to get calls down at Anandale and Washington. This is our second most dangerous intersection in the city. We've invested money in the last year to add safety features such as the new lower signal head that you can see all the way up from Broad Street. We hope this will catch folks' eyes before they get down there. But that intersection, regardless of that new signal head, continued to give us grief. We would get calls constantly to come in at 3:00 in the morning to solve a problem. It's on flash, it's dark. We would bring in our contractor, our contractor couldn't figure it out. We finally threw up our hands and said, the best solution we can come up with at this point is to assume that the wiring in this signal has failed ostensibly. And so we rewired that whole signal this year, and we really have gotten very few calls since. So that is one of the 30-year-old intersections. We can expect that as birds and other rodents live in those poles, they begin to eat away at our wires, and we'll, we're going to need to invest money in those. We also have a signal at Great Falls in Lincoln. A lot of the signals in the city that... A lot of the signals in the city that are on span wires, they're on a wire, they're not on a pole and a mast arm. Mostly on Broad and Washington, we see poles and mast arms. We have a lot of signals that are on utility poles. The case in, at Great Falls and Lincoln, we've gotten a number of calls over the year, not the least of which have come from Dominion Power, that because we're pulling on their utility pole, that that pole has leaned and leaned and leaned further. And we absolutely had to do something this year. And I don't know if you've driven through that intersection in the last two weeks, but there's a new foundation that's been poured. There will be a new, a new pole and mast arm up within the next four weeks, and that intersection will be rebuilt with the new standard, so that we don't bring that whole intersection crashing in. After we're off of the Dominion Pole, the whole new thing will be set and we'll move forward. So there are certain legacy issues like that in our system that we're having to address. We also, I think we've spoken with this group, I know we've spoken with the Planning Commission, you'll see, as we go through the CIP, that there is money, substantial amounts of money set in the CIP for bridge rehabilitation over the next couple of years. The, we have, we have found that we had three bridges. None of the city's bridges were on the national inventory. We noticed immediately that we had a problem this last year, and we brought in a consultant, and we started talking with those guys, and they said, we don't know how you've had bridges for the life of the city, and they're not on this inventory. And we had a Phase 1 inspection of every single bridge in the city to figure out if it needed to be on that list. We found we had 26 of those, and a preliminary look to see how good a shape they're in. And in that process, we found that there were three bridges of concern. You probably have seen that on South Oak, we put weight restrictions on immediately on a bridge that's right near TJ, crosses Trips Run. We closed the pedestrian portion of the bridge at Van Buren across Four Mile Run. The vehicular portion of that bridge is in good shape, but the pedestrian portion, it cantilevers out away from the vehicular portion of that bridge, and simply the structure underneath the sidewalk is not there and is not safe to walk on. So we've cordoned that off and provided safe passage through, with bollards into Van Buren to keep pedestrians and vehicles safe. And then the last bridge, we, is on Sharrow, that crosses on the other side of TJ. That is in, it's in better shape than the other two, but we did repair a sinkhole in the middle of the bridge, and we do know that in the coming two to three years, we need to do some rehabilitation work with that. So we've put together a CIP project that will address that. We have a plan to move forward with a inspection program. That inspection program will need to be done every single year. We'll inspect half of our bridges one year and half of our bridges next, and we'll file them all in the proper place. So those are, those are kind of some big areas where we've said, these are our priorities. We have some unmet needs, and I'll list the three kind of general top areas. They're listed in the budget book on page 121, but they are, the first is we have a single operation superintendent for Public Works. This is Kathy Allen, she's here tonight. Because we have one single operation person that, that brings it all together, brings all of our operational forces together, that person is on call essentially 24 hours, every day, seven days a week, 52 weeks a year. Now, we do have some leverage right now with the water utility, because Robert Goff is their operations superintendent, and we've been able historically to rely on Robert when Kathy needs to take a vacation. But nonetheless, in Public Works alone, we do not have a deputy in that position, and that puts us at risk. So there is concern, and I, I, for one, believe this is our highest priority need. The second highest priority need is equipment in general. We have multiple items that are 20 years old, trucks, leaf boxes, various pieces of equipment that, that really may be at the end of their, may be well beyond the end of their service life. We identified about $500,000 of equipment needs in this as unmet, that are not being paid for in FY14. And I think this is, this is a concern as we move forward. We do not, as a city, kind of have a fleet reserve. The way vehicles are replaced, we replaced a bunch of pickup trucks about two years ago, and we did this opportunistically with grant monies. It was great to have those monies, we brought those in, we put those in the fleet, we retired a bunch of vehicles, and we have nice, new, shiny vehicles. We could not use that same money to buy dump trucks at that time, that were useful to Public Works, because we had to buy hybrid vehicles, and hybrid vehicles you cannot push snow with. And of course, one of the key needs in Public Works is to be able to put a plow on the front of a vehicle with enough power to push snow. So those opportunities with grant money don't always work out the way we'd like. The way I have spoken with Richard LaConde, our CFO, is that it would be really, what would be ideal, is if we had a planned for fleet retirement schedule and a reserve or a fund where it's funded every year, so we knew when vehicles would be retired, and we could plan for that and replace them as time goes on. That does not exist today. And the last big unmet need is, we have, we have a, about $250,000, this next year it'll be $278,000 for paving. This is significantly milling and overlay of our existing roadways. That money has been chipped away over the years as budgets have been thin. We go out every spring, and we rate every block in the city. We have 72 lane miles of roadway in the city. And we go out and we look at every one of those blocks, and we rate it 1 to 5, 5 being a virtually brand-new road that's in ideal condition, and a 5 being a terrible road in bad condition. And up until a few years ago, we were able to pave every road that was a 5, every road that was a 4, and substantially many of the roads that were in the 3 category that were headed towards 4s. So we could always be confident that we were keeping our roads in passable condition. In the last few years, when we go out and rate those roads, we have a number of roads that are rated 4 that we have not been able to pave. Last year, we had to make significant choices, and we paved our highest-volume roads. And so we now have a collection of 4s that will not be paved this year, and knowing that we're not, not putting substantially more money in next year, there will be more 4s that will go unpaved. This will eventually catch up with us, and it'll be, I don't want to say insurmountable, but it will be a problem that will be hard to overcome. And we do have some relief in the CIP. We applied for grant monies this last fall, we expect to get some. And because of the new structure of these grants and VDOT, we're able to use some of those monies, instead of for roadbed reconstruction totally, we can use some of it for maintenance, which is milling and overlay, and we can stretch that money farther. We have a project that was funded, I think, two years ago, where we've gone out and done an assessment, which lays, which begins to lay out a plan, that we can be planful about what roads need to be reconstructed and what roads need to be milled and overlaid. We're, we're making the groundwork, the foundational work, that will carry us into the future, so we'll know what the need is, instead of just every spring going out and looking to see where we are. And we'll be able to track that over time. But I do issue this as a, as a significant concern, that we used to be able to pave all the 5s, all the 4s, and some of the 3s, and we're not able to do that anymore. So those are our three big unmet needs in this budget. And I'm glad, as, I think we wanted to stop at this point, before we talk significantly about stormwater and talk about general fund and the, and what's in Public Works, before we move ahead, and I'll be glad to field any questions.
As I was going through your budget, I, I was mindful of a concern that was raised by one of our citizens about the ability of staff to, to monitor and provide tickets and other fines for solid waste management violations. And that the reason, and I think you know which particular citizen I'm talking about, and which particular situation I'm talking about, and the reason that this individual was told that, that this can't be done, that the, that the current laws on the books of the City of Falls Church can't be complied with, is because there isn't sufficient staff. Now, now, that does not seem to figure into your priorities. Is that, is that the case, or?
I, I, I think that the particular situation is getting a great deal of attention from the staff that we do have. And I do know that that staff, our solid waste manager, is working with the police department, and there has been a significant amount of cooperation on the police department to pay attention to that very issue. And I know that that's going to be also discussed with the chief early next week. I am unwilling to say that we do not have sufficient staff in regards to, to, for enforcement.
Mr. Mayor? And the second question I, I had, as I was going through the budget, actually, I had two more. The, page 129, as I was looking at snow and ice removal, when, when those expenditures are not made, you know, in a, in a good year, I presume that those funds roll over as encumbered? Maybe this is a question for Mr. LaConde.
I can tell you.
Oh, sorry.
Sorry. This is how it's typically done, is because we try and replace our equipment opportunistically. When we come through a winter that we haven't seen a lot of snow, we try and take that snow money, invest it in sanders, or plows, or whatever the need is.
Okay.
So that money, it is a windfall for us when we get to the end of a snow season and have not spent our entire snow budget.
And so that, there's, there's no issue with reconfiguring that money in a fiscal year? Their, council doesn't need to weigh in on that? I mean, it sounds, it sounds right to me, but...
That's correct.
Okay. And then last but not least, on page 131, leaf mulch distribution as part of your leaf collection. The city no longer does that, does it?
It does not.
Staff events. Okay, the staff events.
Yes, what Kathy's saying is that we do distribute it through our events. So we have, we don't bring it to, to individual houses anymore, but we do distribute it at, we have several events. I think last year, we had probably five. We're starting this year, right now, we've had multiple so far. And they're usually Saturday events. We bring in our crews who load in the back of pickups or otherwise to people who show up.
Other council members?
Is this where the Northwest Street project lives, right? The sidewalk and...
In the CIP budget, but it's managed.
Right. Can you just give us an update on that? One of my neighbors was asking recently about sidewalks in front of her house.
So right now, this is, this is one of those projects that's in a significant amount of transition right now, in terms of management in-house. We have worked closely with planning staff, and that planning staff, I think you guys got an email, that Wendy Block Sanford is moving on. And we're, Kirsten Muntz, in our shop, our transportation engineer, is now taking full reins of this. And we're actually meeting early next week to kind of see where we are with that. But the last discussion I had is that we, we were given the go-ahead by you guys to develop the engineering needed to move this project forward. We have an engineer that's been procured, they've done survey work, they've done some of the study work in terms of parking studies, and that work is under design right now. But it, it is not backed from being designed to, to take it back out and issue a, you know, go out for bid. And if, if you'll let me answer that question a little bit better when we talk about CIP, I have another book back there that I can tell you when it does go out for bid.
I just wanted to make, you know, there was a question about committing enough effort to qualify for the, the money by a certain time, and I, my impression was that time was February or something, so I just hope that we've...
Without question, it was, it was very definitive, what we had to do.
Right.
We did that, and we accomplished it.
Sorry, other council members?
Good question. I remember with respect to some pedestrian improvements, there were money that had to be spent, sort of along Phil's line. What's the status of that money? Is there any money that's on the verge of being lost, as far as various pedestrian improvements?
We, we have a number of CIP projects that, we, I think you guys...
Page 22.
Page 22 of the update, 222 of the updates in your CIP budget book.
No, in the budget, in the regular budget book.
In the regular budget book. There's a lot of books up here. Just in general. So what is before you on page 222, is, 221 it starts, is a, the 18-month projected projects out of the CIP, that includes stormwater projects, but the transportation projects start on 221. And many of these projects are grant-funded. So the West Broad in Pennsylvania Signal, that's actually our highest priority project. That one has the quickest deadline, that we have to put that money in the ground. That one goes out this spring, will be constructed very quickly. So are we in danger of losing that money? The deadline is very quick. We are engineering, we're moving ahead, there's nothing that I feel like we're in danger of losing the money for, but our staff is very focused right now on doing the design work, working with finance to get through procurement and see these through. And that is, that is true for a multiple of these. You name, the next, the next project is the traffic flow improvements at Mary Ellen Henderson, that was safe routes to school, that money has to be completed within two years. Roosevelt Avenue intersection, we, we have until 2014 to complete that, but, but we have many of these are long lead-time projects, and we, we can absolutely go through each one, if you would like. We think they're under control, but we are working hard. It is a big focus out of our office to make sure these projects, I mean, there is millions of dollars available to be spent in the city, and we're working to make sure that we're good stewards of that.
Do you guys have any plans to put in countdown crosswalks? In other words, where the, that actually counts down the time left before the light's going to change?
We do. We have a project that goes out, I think it goes to VDOT for their 30-day review, and out for bid in another month. It's called the LED signal upgrade. And everywhere that there are pedestrian heads that, that do not meet that standard, not only are we replacing all the signal heads with LEDs, but the pet heads would be LEDs with the countdown items. And we worked very hard to say, let's try and tackle all of the intersections in the city. But we can't get to that point unless we bring them all up to full compliance with ADA standard, which limits, we're down to really, we're going to do the one at Park and Little Falls, right out here at City Hall. It's probably one of the highest pedestrian traffic intersections in the city, given Saturday mornings. But that one is next on the list to upgrade to full ADA compliance with the pet heads. And then we've got a project at Roosevelt. We have a big project that goes from Roosevelt and Roosevelt, all the way down Roosevelt Street to Broad Street, and both of those intersections will be rebuilt. That one, I think, is about a year away from going out for bid. And both of those intersections will be rebuilt with full ADA compliance, new signal heads, and pedestrian countdown.
So are you saying that we're getting grant money, and the grant money won't come from the state of VDOT until we do a full upgrade? And how many are not going to, we're not going to be able to fund, even though we'd like to, because we're not doing the full upgrade? In other words, how many intersections are we losing out on, because we aren't able to do the full ADA upgrade, approximately?
So we're bound by ADA to comply. I mean, when we go in and invest in an intersection, we need to make sure we're complying with ADA. When we're using federal monies that we're going to be audited from, I mean, that's all the more, we have to do that. So putting a pet head on a, on a signal post is not terribly expensive. Rebuilding an intersection is very expensive. So, you know, the costs, they're looked at case by case. Every single intersection has got to be fully evaluated. We can't just take this money and stick it out on a pole and call it done.
Like, what percentage of intersections are we going to do in the city, approximately?
Well, right now, I named three.
Out of...
We have, well, how many, we have 26 signalized intersections.
Okay, so just three out of 26?
But we have, a number of them already have pet heads on them. So I could, I don't have all the details on that.
I don't want all the details.
You can think about Virginia and Broad. You can think about Virginia and Broad. It has pet heads on it, it's compliant with ADA, but those are not countdown signal heads. Those will be replaced, and they will be upgraded. Certainly, I could bring the details of that bid spec at some point, but I don't have that in front of me, no.
That's fine. Thank you.
Other council members?
We'll shift to stormwater, and Bill will guide us to the page for that. So, what we want to do is go through the operating budget, and we can also talk about the capital budget for stormwater, and then take your questions on that.
So, I am on page 203. And so, stormwater has been, we have talked at length about stormwater, but there may be folks who are listening tonight that, I'll talk just briefly, I'll back up a little bit. We have funded stormwater out of the general fund in Public Works up till now. And what has been proposed, coming out of the development of the watershed management plan, that was a push to meet the oncoming Chesapeake Bay obligations, the general need to reinvest and rehabilitate our $80 million worth of investment that's already in the ground. We've got 27 miles of storm sewer, we've got 70 miles of curb and gutter, and 1,400 appurtenances that tie it all together. That ages out over time. It's worth about $80 million, and we do know that we have some deficiencies.
I don't have a microphone on, I apologize.
You know, you're right. We've all heard this a number of times. If the individuals who have not attended and have not looked at the stormwater issue in the enterprise fund, the likelihood that they will be following this meeting is extremely low. So, why don't we just go directly to the issue at hand, okay?
I think we may want to jump into the budget piece of it. How about that?
I, fair enough. The stormwater budget is proposed to be in an enterprise fund. We propose to, that stormwater budget would be about $1.7 million worth of expenses. That includes salaries. Currently, in the general fund, we pay for 1.2 full FTEs, plus the salaries of the folks we borrow from highway streets and sidewalks to do work on stormwater when we do it. What is proposed before you is to increase the number of FTEs by eight. So, that would be 9.2 at the end of the day. Those FTEs would be an engineer, an engineering inspector, a GIS person, admin person, and a full four-person crew that would be dedicated to stormwater, that would meet what we talked about last November, about meeting those kind of As and Bs in the report card. Then we would have, the rest of that, the rest of the budget would be to fund that essentially $2 million a year in capital improvements, which is roughly $1 million for water quality, and $1 million for that rehab, reinvestment into our conveyance and flood control system. So, that's generally what it is. So, it takes 1.2 FTEs out of the general fund, takes the other expenses we associate with stormwater, which is about one cent, moves it over into the enterprise fund. All of that together is about $1.7 million. $2 million, that's 100% debt-funded, is capital, and the rest is operational monies. And one thing that we can talk about, what all of those pieces are, I would like to get to kind of talk about the credit program. I think that's certainly of interest to a number of people.
I think we should talk about the credit piece, but perhaps there's questions on the budget piece before we move to the credits? Just, since Dave isn't here, he shared with me two quick points. One was regarding the staff and the cost of the program, and whether there's any way of trimming down the number of staff and doing more project-based. And also, he had some questions about whether there's a way of gradually phasing in the costs. So, two separate questions.
In regards to whether or not we could trim the staff down, I think that we have looked at this very hard. We've tried to look at this forward, and what may be needed with the sewer fund, when the sewer fund is orphaned from the water fund. You know, that's built significantly on, you've got a water utility, and you've got the sewer utility. The water utility shares many, almost all the same employees. So, when that is gone, that's orphaned. And we have looked down the road about how this would be, how we could leverage those two items. We think that we're as trim as we can be to get there. And as an anecdote, one of the things, I talk to Arlington County often, one of the things they have repeated to me is that it was really great when what they did was they added a lot of money, but they did not put enough staff on those projects to be able to construct them. And you want us to be good stewards of your money. Mr. Tarter, not moments ago, asked me if we are in danger of losing some grant monies, because we have had this discussion about our transportation projects. Are we doing enough to get to the end of them? That all, all of those projects, every one of our transportation projects is being designed by consultants. Those are contractors that work for us, but we have to oversee them, we have to hold their hands, we have to give them the right answers when they need them, to produce the documents that we need to be able to move those projects forward. It takes staff to oversee those projects, and I really believe that we have looked at this as closely as we can, to give you a product that's as lean as possible, that will deliver on what we promise.
Phil?
So, let's see if I can articulate this. I guess a question that I hear is, compared to the current effort that we're expending, how much more effort will be able to be accomplished with this additional staff, with this $863,000 worth of full-time benefited staff?
I'm just flipping through my documents right now. I think the best way to articulate that is through that report card that we sat down and looked at last October or November. And in there, we talked about how we've got 27 miles of storm sewer, and we're unable to touch all of that every single year. And we've seen the pictures that were there before we invested, and the contractor to come in and clean those out. And those storm sewers that were huge, were halfway filled up, we want to touch those reaches every year. We need a crew that's dedicated to get to that place. We've got the sinkholes that we talked about, those separations in pipe. As Mr. Snyder was speaking earlier, Ms. Allen and I were talking about a problem we have on Anandale right now, where a collapsed pipe is getting worse, preceding the time, we go out for bid for a project late this summer to repair that 100 block of Broad Street, but we can't get to it fast enough, and we're going to have to go out and make a fairly major repair very quickly, so that it is safe and will continue to carry stormwater down. While we do that, it takes us a week, takes us two weeks, that's time that our street crews are not doing street work. So, in here, we talk about, we talk about touching every reach annually. This budget will do that. We talk about cammering, going through and looking at every line, and determining the condition of that, a storm sewer evaluation study every fifth year. This budget will do that. We want to address those sinkholes. This budget will do that. We want to implement the watershed management plan, that capital portion of the watershed management plan. This will do that. That $6.7 million worth of projects, this budget will carry this forward. We want to comply with our MS4 obligations, those new requirements that we're going to have to do. We want to avoid those fines, that $32,500 per day per violation. This budget will do that. We want to reinvest in our system, that $1 million annually for the reinvestment and rehabilitation of the existing system we have on the ground. This budget moves us very closely to paying for that $80 million investment over 80 years. We bring, did I do that again? This budget will bring us to, this, we'll be able to map, to leverage our camera work and our planning work, the work that Mr. Snyder does. By having a GIS professional onboard, we'll be able to leverage that work. And certainly, we will stay in compliance with our Chesapeake Bay, our erosion and sediment control, and our floodplain management regulatory programs.
So, if I'm getting what you're saying, the argument would be that all those activities that you listed would be things that we would have tried to do if we were not creating a stormwater utility. But we would not have been able to do them as quickly or as effectively unless we hire this new, create this new entity and hire these people to do the work.
Without...
So, whatever trade-off we make, and the expense that we incur here is going to be a trade-off in what we're able to do and how fast we're able to do it. Okay. The second question is, the structure of the way that you're going to fund the utility is through a fee, so-called fee, that will be levied in December of this year, is that right?
Yes.
So, how will we be accomplishing the work that we would normally have done in the first six months of the fiscal year if you're not collecting money to do what you're laying out until midway through the fiscal year? And I just knew that that's a Richard question.
We provide services whether we've collected the money or not. I mean, just look at your real estate...
That's a nifty trick, if you can do that.
Well, understand this.
This is something I do need to understand, because that is, you know, it seems to me like there's a six-month gap. If there's something else we can promise to do six months from now, not collect the money today, then I want to know what that is.
All right. Well, it's not as simplistic as that. But we do have enough resources so that we can advance money until we get it. The prime example are your real estate taxes. We don't collect the money first before we start operating July 1st. We send the bills out, but we don't necessarily collect it all. So, we are able to fund projects and provide services. And the same thing will happen with the stormwater.
So, is the money that would be provided, you know, programmed for something else, or programmed for this, or, how's that, how does that show up in your books?
We have cash. Okay? We do have cash. I mean, your fund balance is what is providing the working capital...
Okay, so the answer is we're going to draw from the fund balance to do this work for six months until we start collecting the fee.
That's right.
Okay.
I mean, if you started up a business tomorrow, what would you start with?
You know, I'm just asking, because obviously, there are those who believe that...
It's very similar to what you would do at home.
It's just useful to know how the fund balance can be used.
Yes.
That's one, you would say the fund balance can be used for that, because it is being directed towards a, basically, a hard expense, capital expense.
No, that's not true.
Let me simplify. This is a question of cash flow, and so, most of our revenue comes in in December with that first real estate billing, and then the second big chunk of money comes in in June. And before that, for all of our operations, our cash flow balances get drawn down, just as a normal matter of course. And that's the way it operates every year. In our monthly financial reports and our quarterly financial reports, we actually show that as to what our fund balance is at the end of quarter, and we show that drawdown. It's just a question of cash flow.
Okay. Do we talk now about the credit program, or...
Let's see if there's any more questions about the budget.
Public process, or...
I have a question. It's, I guess, it's a bit of a statement as well, but I do share the concern about kind of going very rapidly to a larger bureaucracy of eight or nine or whatever number of employees, full-time employees. And I guess I would encourage you to consider some sort of ramp-up, where it's not, you know, the lights on, the lights off, but kind of ramping up and seeing how things go. With any new enterprise, things don't always work out the way you want them to be, and so I might suggest sort of a more gradual increase in number of employees.
As a practical matter, it is going to be a ramp-up.
Well, I would suggest a ramp-up that's not, you know, within one month, but a period over a length of time, to see whether you need all these employees, how it works out. I mean, frankly, in general, my preference would be to use independent contractors. If the demand lowers, you don't have to keep them on staff, you don't have some of the same costs as you would have here in the city, pensions and things like that. And so, some things seem to me like they would lend themselves well to that, such as maintenance of your system, in other words, flushing it out. I have no idea whether that would be accurate or not, but I would imagine there are folks who specialize in maintenance, who have all the latest equipment, they update their own equipment, you don't have to pay for, you know, capital costs and things like that. But I have no idea the specifics of that, but I know in general, in business and enterprise, there are groups that do things like that, and so I would encourage you to at least consider that going forward. But I do have those concerns about the size of the employees.
I, we did do contract work to flush our system a number of years ago, and I don't have the exact number, but it was a huge amount of money dedicated to just flushing our system, where we hired contractors who worked for, I think, multiple years to try and clean the system out. And what was decided at the end of that is that we need to maintain a system instead of hiring contractors to come in and do that work, because it is so expensive to do with outside labor.
You believe you could be a lower-cost provider of that service than an outside contractor?
Yes, for the need that's there. There are certainly specialties that we envision we're going to have to bring in contractors. There is money in the operational side, other than just the capital monies to hire a contractor to build a system. There is money in the operational side to bring in contractors to do the big pipes, the ones that are really deep, the ones that we're not going to have a skill set to deal with, and that come in with big track hoes and do work. Even though it's a point repair, it's a complicated point repair, and what, we're not going to have the skill set to do that. And so, those are things that we want to set money aside, so that they can come in and do that work very quickly and get it done. But we need to have crews on staff, because when you see a hurricane coming, you want to make sure you've got crews out there who are cleaning the catch basins. And if you're relying on somebody to come in, just like our, we had a tree contractor this last year who does tree removals. And when the derecho came, we could not get them to honor that contract, and we had to do emergency procurement. And there's nothing that we can do about a contractor who won't fulfill his obligations at a time of real need.
That's fine. I...
This is an old story about what is it that you can outsource, and what does you have to do in-house? And whenever you're working with the private sector, you get an issue, they change their business model, they go out of business, there's a whole bunch of things that we have no control. For our time-sensitive issue, there's got to be a core of people who report to the city. That exact number depends on the work that you're doing. But there are a number of functions that cannot be outsourced, or it's a very bad idea to outsource them. I don't think you were in the council at the time, Dave, but there were people who came to talk to the city council after the flood damage, and I certainly would not want to have them come back to the city council again and say, I had to spend another $3,000, $4,000, $5,000 in basement damages and repairs and whatnot, when it's a matter of getting the staff ramped up as quickly as is reasonable. I don't think you could do it in a month, even if you wanted it to. So, I would like these people's concerns to be addressed, as well as concern about how fast we build up the FTEs.
Could I respond?
Please.
I mean, I think it's a trade-off, Ira, and it's a balancing. I mean, you've got to balance cost, efficiency, quality, and all those things together. I'm not sure I know, I'm not sure you know what that balance is, that's why we're asking Bill tonight to give us some information, so we can give guidance back to him. But I think that it isn't always necessarily the case that the most... that it isn't always necessarily the case that the most efficient and best source of service is the government. And so I would, again, just encourage you to consider all the options because we are in a tight fiscal situation. Thank you.
If I could, I'm glad Mr. Kalin asked that question because it is the question that came up again last night and one on which I thought we were most speechless, which is what happens when we get a big rain event and for some reason sewage backs up in people's basements. I understand, believe it or not, I am not entirely dim. I understand that there's a difference between the sewage system and the water system. And yet, as soon as this fee gets imposed and it rains and they get their sewage, they will be coming to us, to you, to me, well, to whoever's on council. And they'll want to know why their problem isn't fixed since they paid their tax. And you've, I've always been very honest to say, you know what, we're not going to solve their problem. We're not going to promise to solve their problem. And I think that's helpful. The additional wrinkle last night was bringing in the, the question about the sewer staff and the orphaned nature of what we're getting ready to go through here now. All this leads me to ask, you know, organizationally, budgetarily, are we going to be able to see a future where, you know, Bill is standing up with arm-in-arm with the person who is dealing with the sewers and the two of them together are telling the citizens, "You know what? Here's what we've done. Here's what we're going to do. Here's the 10-year plan." Because I think we don't have that now. And if we're going to go to, you know, the effort to create this new bureaucracy and utility for every good reason, then I think that is a service that we need to be able to provide to citizens. So is it reasonable to expect that once we hash out the sale of the water system and the orphan sewer system gets a home, then, then the structure that you contemplate will be able to deliver that kind of information to the public?
Do you want to answer?
Well, I, I will. I, that is the idea, that, that sewer and storm will be in public works under unified management. And those teams are going to work very closely together. Very similar skill sets. And, and so there are synergies there. And also, I think in terms of planning and problem-solving, there'll be synergies. And so I will acknowledge the fact that stormwater and sewer used to be under unified management. And then with the reorganization of three years ago where we did away with that layer of management of the general managers, they were bifurcated. So this will reunite them again under, under unified management. But I think what we've tried to do in terms of, of promising and setting expectations is, you know, that September storm of two years ago where there was standing water in the streets going right into sewer manholes, that is a situation that we, and then it goes into the sanitary sewer manholes and then ends up in people's basements. That's a situation that I don't think there is an engineering fix for, that any amount of expenditure funds would, would, that's reasonable, would solve. What we really want to solve are these recurring two-year events where people are just, the system is failing them. It's not handling what a minimum design standard ought to handle. That is what we want to hold ourselves accountable and say in a reasonable period of time, we're going to fix those. And, and I think, you know, what we've presented to the council is a serious proposal to achieve that. If there are reductions to it, that's, we, we certainly can have that discussion. But it does mean decelerating our ability to accomplish those goals and weakening our ability to address them. And, and we just, and we're perfectly open to having a rational discussion about level of service and level of funding and understand that.
Other council members?
The one question that I had is if we can, at some point, before we adopt, if we can have further discussion about the efficiencies between the stormwater fund and also the sewage fund and how we can work on integrating the two, which is, it sounds like the route that we're going in.
Mm-hmm.
Whether there's any efficiencies to be gained by that, whether we can try to bring down the eight new FTEs down a little bit.
Okay. We can map that out as to kind of what our thinking is in terms of this, this staffing. And it would be tentative at this point because we've, we've got some work to do in that transition, but we could share what, what our current thinking is.
And, and I, and I share some of the concerns that both Dave Snyder and Dave Carter raised, just, just about the number of employees on creating a new enterprise. If there's any way that we can build on efficiencies, and I don't know what the magic number is. And I don't think the council is going to get into the weeds of sort of the metrics of how do you measure dollars that you're spending on infrastructure projects themselves versus how many staff you have sort of back of the house to manage those. If there's any standards that consultants have, just so we can measure that and explain that to the public, would be helpful if they're readily available. Again, not to do a massive, if there's something off the shelf that we know that we're hitting the ballparks of good management practices based on people who do this and other localities that have done it. I think the, the reaction that you're getting is eight new staff seems like a lot for a new enterprise. But nobody in this room, other than sort of our experts, know what we're measuring against, that on. But in a time of financial constraints, it seems like a lot. So, all right. Anything else on this?
Okay.
Credits.
So we had a watershed plan and we got to the place, yes, sir?
Just to set the context of the discussion, you'd raised a very interesting point yesterday, that there was a certain minimum amount that was going to have to be paid irrespective of the, might be useful for the average, what you'd expect from the average house. What is?
What is the area that's subject to credit? You know, the amount of payment?
And I'm sorry, before we go on to credits, there's one other point that I wanted to make, I think that, that needs to be touched on. I heard council member Duncan talk about sort of what I think I heard was a lack of a plan, a 10-year plan. And I, I thought the whole effort of having a watershed management plan, which this council adopted, was to get us on the track of having a plan. So I don't know why we keep coming back to this. This has been a multi-year effort of trying to plan this out, where metrics were developed on how to identify the projects. So we've got one. So Mr. Duncan, I, you know, can you, can you help me articulate?
Sure, it's fair, I mean, stems from the conversation of the last meeting when the question was asked. We have pressing needs that amount, if we did them all to, you picked the figure, 15, 20 million, something like that. And, and I asked the question, okay, could we bond all those at once?
I guess, let, let me be clear.
Could I say, could I just answer your question?
Yeah, please, please.
Try to answer your question. Could we bond all those at once and, and do them with contracted staff? And I was, as I understood it, maybe I misunderstood, I was told that we'd have to have a plan in order to float that kind of a bond. And so naturally, I, I agree with you. I, I thought we had a plan. That's why I asked the question. I thought all we got to do is pull that plan right off the, off the program and give it to the bond floaters and off we go. But, but I was told that we don't have a plan sufficient to do that.
Plan meaning staff, because one of the answers to your question was, just give us more money. We gave you a plan initially for what we thought we could accomplish with stormwater. It was felt that it was too expensive. You are now down to 1.7. So how do you think that you can now say, let's go bond 20 million and use this crew size to get these projects done? That's the planning part.
Okay, so the original, it's helpful, information that we didn't hear last week. The information that we were dealing with in October contemplated a larger staff than the one that we're talking about now. I mean, that's, and, and staff is part of the plan. And so that, that's your answer. Is that right? I mean, we got staff now. We have eight staff and we have a plan. So...
Yeah, but if you say, "I'll give you 10 million, let's bond $10 million now," that doesn't mean that we could accomplish it.
Okay.
You still need more staff to do that.
I confess that, I'm trying to answer the mayor's question and, and I'm, we have a plan, but we can't accomplish it. And yet, we're going to create a utility to accomplish it.
No, 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 no.
Okay.
You're, you're trying to accelerate the bonding. All right? You have a 10-year plan, a stormwater plan. You have a 20-year stormwater plan. Throwing $10 million at it in one year doesn't eliminate the fact that it's going to take 20 years. And you can't sit on money for 20 years.
With all due respect, I think the issue is, Phil, what I hear you saying, and I've heard you say this before, is why don't we just bond out the 10 million and not do the enterprise fund? And if that's the approach that we take, which isn't the approach that the previous council had taken in its planning efforts, there is no plan to do what you are proposing, which is taking $10 million, bond it all now to do the projects. But if you are talking about, is there a plan for meeting our priorities in a fashion that's logical and moves us forward, you know, in, in incremental steps, there is that plan. And that's the watershed management plan which has been adopted. Now, was there thinking about all of a sudden bonding all these projects out? I, I'd be surprised. Again, I don't, I don't recall all the conversations about whether that came up or not.
You'd have arbitrage rules that would kick in and let you hire a much bigger staff to do it all of a sudden.
Your mic.
I'm sorry.
So, so I, I think when we're talking about a plan, we have to really understand what it is that we're talking about.
Thank, thanks. Everyone who is wise is, you know, nodding their heads in agreement. So I yield the ground on this. No, I, I'm totally serious. I do not want to slow us down. I don't want to make the meetings run any longer than anybody else does.
But the reason why I'm emphasizing, I've been relatively quiet during this meeting, but it's one of those things where...
All I want to do is, I want to be able to say to people who have problems, you know, "We have a plan and we're carrying it out." If you're confident that we're going to be able to say that to them, it's helpful to hear the manager say, "You know what? We're not promising to solve the 10-year flood. We're promising to solve the one- and two-year flood." That's useful. And so if that's where we are, fine.
Well, one of the decisions, Phil, you, you had mentioned this issue, and I think Dave brought up as well, about pacing ourselves and balancing it. And that's partly how we ended up at a plan that's going to take this many years to do it. I, I think what, what Nader's trying to say, there, there is a way to make a plan and hire enough people and borrow enough money to do something right away. But nobody thought that was wise, given the fiscal situation and what it would take. And you, you actually can't borrow public funds like that and then put them in the bank for 10 years. There's all kinds of rules against that. So I think the financing is trying to be tailored to match, you know, the, the idea was build a plan, agree on a reasonable plan that's a little more affordable, and then spread it out over a period. Because, you know, typically what you do when you can't afford to do something right away is you say, "Well, we need to get from A to B. We can't do it in one year. Can we do it in five years? Can we do it in 10?" And that's, that's a lot of what went into, and I, and I realize you weren't here for some of this because it went a period of years, that the plan was developed and that's where we ended up now. Does that kind of summarize it?
I think that summarizes it.
Exactly right.
Yep.
There was an original suggestion or proposal was $4 million, if I recall. It was a larger, and that would have been at less than 10 years. But it was decided that we would ask for, you know, a reduction. And the counter-ide proposal was the $1.7 million. But it's always been an issue of calibrating, you know, the, the speed of the program with the number of staff that we could actually use to do. Ron, I don't know, you know, what Virginia law is. I do know in finance, if you go out and bond for 10 years, and let's say it was a 3.5%, and we have to put it in, this I do know, we can only put it in short-term investments or CDs or whatever that earn 0.5% each year, we could be...
And it is federal tax rule.
We could be losing 3% a year as the money sits in the institution waiting to be expended.
No one in their right mind would argue to borrow money and then let it sit. So I'm just observing. This is different from the way you build a school. You need a school, you bond $50 million or $30 million like we did for Merrill Henderson. Outside contractors come in and build it. And they do it...
Like the one-year project.
Right. And they do it, and they do it in two years. And it's done and they go away. This is not the way we're going to be doing the stormwater management. We're going to, we're going to do it over time with dedicated staff. And, and so that's why I think the staff side costs more for the, for the amount of effort, the, the amount of money that you're investing, you're spending relatively more on staff, which causes you to need to take longer to do the work.
Staff's not just capital projects. It, it's an ongoing day-to-day operation. I think that was the point that Mr. Jackson's trying to make. That, that's...
And, and there's...
...oversee construction. Is that...
That's exactly right.
Yeah. There's advantages to having the dedicated staff. That, I mean, Mr. Snyder last night, y'all were there, well, those of you who were there, you know, he's pounding on the table about $863,000 that we're going to spend on staff to do this. And, you know, people in the room are nodding, "Yeah, yeah, it sounds like a lot to me." I mean, I think it's important for people to understand, you did leave too soon. You left before Mr. Snyder made his remarks, which were, you know, rousing. And, you know, yeah.
Exactly.
So, so was the controversy.
I'm not the only, I'm not the only one that causes Ira to slap his head. You know, I just think people need to know that. It's not like we're building a school. We're doing something different.
Yeah, there's, there's three things we're trying to do. One is operation. Two is capital for replacing aging-out infrastructure. And then third is capital for water quality improvements. But that, number one, the operation piece, I think is a reasonable question. Could you contract out the operations? What our experience has been is that that was terribly expensive. We had to stop the contracted maintenance work because it was killing us. We could actually buy equipment and do it ourselves in one year to avoid the, to avoid the ongoing contract cost. That was our experience with it. But it's, it's a rational question. We can, you know, talk about that more. But that, that's the reason we didn't recommend going in that direction.
And I think just as a minor footnote, I, I think the enterprise would be, if it's put forward, is going to be doing some bonded projects.
Yeah.
So there will be some public bonding that happens through that process as we're doing each one.
Can we?
Yep. Let's, we've...
Yeah, that's not even the area that I was going to talk about tonight. So yee-haw.
Just to make it clear, if it, when the, when, when the bonds go out, it's still on the city's books because we're the guarantor of the operation. So that would have to get mixed into all the other CIP projects that we're going to be looking forward to in the next couple of years. And those numbers are getting to be quite large.
But, but the bonds that we're issuing are going to be able to be executed immediately and not going to have to, we're, we're not going to have to worry about sitting around. I mean, you've, you've calibrated your bond effort to your staff effort, correct?
Yes. We, we won't go out to market until we're ready to start the, the project.
All right. I think we are now on to facilities.
Credits?
I'm sorry, credits, yes. Almost jumped over that.
So we, we've talked about, one of the, one of the great advan, one of the great advantages of an enterprise fund that's built with fees, utility fees, is that we can incentivize doing things on individual properties that would discount the, your particular fee. And there's, there's the immediate way that you can discount your fee, is that if it's based on impervious cover and you remove impervious cover, your fee will go down because your fee is a rate times your impervious cover. You come up with a fee. You reduce your, your impervious cover, that rate, that fee automatically goes down. But we also want to, and we're mandated by the enabling legislation, to have a credit program. And so if people do things on their individual properties that are permanent and they contribute to the purpose of the enterprise fund, then they need to be able to take credit for this. And so we have, we had a conversation last week. We've walked back. We've talked. We've met with our consultant. And we've come up with what we think is our proposal for a, a credit program. As you may recall, there's about 90 BMPs on our current inventory. Those have been built significantly on private property and through the Chesapeake Bay Preservation Ordinance obligations. You come in, you redevelop, you develop a new site. You've got to do water quality control. That almost inevitably requires a best management practice for water quality. Those are built in accordance with engineering standards that are held tight at the state. And we review those. And we now have an inventory. When you build a BMP, you file a BMP agreement. It's recorded with your deed. And in that, it says that I'm the owner of this BMP. I'm going to maintain this BMP in perpetuity. And the city can come onto the property and inspect that BMP and expect that if there are deficiencies, you'll go out, the individual property owner will rectify those in a, in a discreet amount of time. And it's on our register. We have 90 of those. Those types of BMPs would qualify for a credit. And so those that exist, those that may exist in the city that aren't on the inventory, they could be applied for and receive a credit. And that's going to be a structural BMP credit. And we propose that the credit received for that type of BMP be... And we propose that the credit received for that type of BMP be 30%. So, to explain this specifically, if you have a parcel that has, say, 1,000 square feet of drainage area that comes to a BMP, and that BMP meets those criteria, built according to the standard, recorded BMP agreement, maintained and operated in the appropriate manner, then all of that 1,000 square feet of drainage area, that credit, the 30% reduction could be applied to that, that 1,000 square feet. Now, if your property has 2,000 square feet of impervious cover and 1,000 of it drains to that BMP, then only that 1,000 feet would qualify for the 30% reduction. That portion of your property that is impervious and drains elsewhere, not through that BMP, not creating that water quality benefit that's received by the community, then that doesn't qualify for a reduction. So, that's the first part of the program. The second part of the program would be a potential for a 10% reduction for a stormwater pollution prevention plan in place. And that would be a engineer, our engineering staff would develop a checklist. And on that checklist, it would include things like a nutrient management plan. How often do you fertilize? When you fertilize? When would be allowed to fertilize? Pesticide management plan could include, outreach would include some measure of outreach beyond your staff or your home, you know, out to the community. It would include management of your household hazardous waste or your hazardous waste. You would train your employees to deal with hazardous waste in an appropriate way. May include how you mow your lawn. Do you bag all your, your, your grass clippings, your cuttings, and send that out and then have to then apply fertilizer? Could include rain barrels. We certainly have a very strong program here in town. Rain barrels aren't necessarily one of those permanent BMPs that meet the DCR specification. But as a part of this kind of stormwater pollution prevention plan, these items could be included, and they would receive a 10% discount. So, if you applied for, had a plan in place, applied to have that plan accepted by engineering, we would review that, put that on file, and then you would receive that 10% reduction. So, that would be your total credit program. Now, I think there are other opportunities, programmatic opportunities, where the city will say, we have 20 projects that are in the watershed management plan. These are, this is our community plan. We've got those 20 projects that we've said, these are our highest areas of concern in the city, and we're looking for solutions. And if you look at, we're, we're designing two projects right now. One is to benefit Great Falls and below that drains to Four Mile Run. The first phase of that solution is to hold back water on the City Hall campus. It's not to increase the pipe size down below. That's potentially a second phase. But the first phase is, let's see how much water we can hold back so we don't need more capacity downstream. We have another project that's under design right now on Douglas Avenue. Douglas Avenue is flooding. We've certainly heard folks come in and talk about that. The need to solve that, is it a bigger pipe that just shoots water further downstream and potentially causes those downstream impacts that we were, we were certainly directed not to let that happen? Or is it to hold water back? And we can think about the big parking lots on the churches parking, churches areas just above Douglas Avenue. We can think about the redevelopment that, the development sites, commercial development sites that are even higher above that. Those could potentially be targets of opportunity that we programmatically could leverage our needs with activities that they go on in those areas. So, those are not necessarily credits, but they are targets of opportunity that we would work with our CIP program and the needs that are outlined in our watershed management plan.
Mr. Callen?
Could you answer the question I asked before about what the hookup, I mean, effectively what the rate would be irrespective of the credit? I mean, because you still have to take care of the EPA regulations, et cetera. So, what is the, of the $270 average, how much of that is for a base fee and what would be left for credits?
So, if, if you had a $270 fee on your property, if we've estimated that you've got that 2,755 square feet of impervious cover, and your fee is roughly $270, $75, and you could take advantage of the 30% removal, then your fee would then be for all of that drainage area. You know, certainly your, your whole site would have to drain to that BMP, your whole impervious area would have to drain to that BMP. Your fee would then be $189. If you also had one of those SWPs, the Stormwater Pollution Prevention Plan, in place as well as the BMP, then that's a 40% reduction. So, then your fee would be $162 by availing yourself of both of those credits. Now, of course, those are calculated on an individual basis.
Thank you.
Couple of questions for you. So, for example, like rain barrels, I don't know what the runoff of, for example, of a roof, but a rain barrel, I think, holds about 55 gallons, if I'm not mistaken. It seems like it has fairly minor impact in the total stormwater runoff of a roof. Would that be enough to get you a 10% reduction, the bill putting in a 55-gallon rain barrel?
No. We, you, that would be part of this whole stormwater pollution prevention plan. It would be a list, and that you would have multiple things that you would have to do to meet that obligation. And it would not simply be a rain barrel, because, yes, in fact, you're right, that, that a 55-gallon rain barrel fills up in minutes.
Seconds.
Yeah, really seconds, because you measure runoff in cubic feet, which is 7.48 gallons. It's a lot more water.
So, that to get the 10%, you would have to do all of a list of, you know, eight different things? But that wouldn't be a commitment that would be recorded in the land records? That would be just something on file that you say, I promise I won't use fertilizers, I promise I'll use a self-mulching mower, or I promise I'll do whatever this list of things are? And that would enable you to get a 10% reduction?
That, that is the proposal. I think it's very difficult for, I mean, it takes staff to do enforcement. No question about it. We're not going to be out there every time you mow your grass or every time. I mean, we just, that, that's beyond what our capacity, beyond those eight people we're talking about, it would require significantly more. So, there will be a matter of trust associated with that kind of secondary behavioral credit.
And the first kind of credit you were talking about, is that essentially storage crocks, like water crocs that have filters in them? Is that what you're talking about to get the 30% reduction?
So, there's a whole menu of best management practices. They include things like rain gardens, which are landscaped depressions that drain and filter water. They could be sand filters, which water comes into a crock and it settles down through sand, and nutrients and sediment are taken out. They could be big cisterns, large cisterns that try and, that work to address the storage needed, not the rain barrels, but the big cisterns. And there are standards for all of those sorts of BMPs, and they're held at the state level. And so, to, to claim those credits, you would, you would have to design according to those standards.
And for most people, that would involve some pretty major construction, unless it's brand-new construction. Anybody else, you're talking about pretty significant retrofit, putting in a 2,000-gallon whatever, below grade?
Yes. Certainly, certainly putting a sand filter on your property would be a significant amount of construction. Cisterns are not necessarily as expensive. Rain gardens are certainly not near, not necessarily that expensive.
I would encourage, for the credits, that you actually make an attempt, maybe you have already, to have the credit be kind of rational with the actual benefit that's being provided. In other words, that, you know, whatever it is, it sort of equals this amount of benefit, therefore, that's the kind of credit we're going to give you. Not necessarily, you know, how we just say, this is 10%, or this is 30%, but actually, this group of things will provide this kind of benefit, and therefore, that's the proportioned credit you'll receive.
And really, the way, the way we have thought about that is this. If you think about the, kind of the general costs associated with this program, about 30% of it is about water quality. I mean, it's certainly a driver, but in terms of programmatic staff and your $15 million investment versus your $80 million investment for your system, we're figuring it's about 30%. And so, that's, that's really where we came up with that 30% number.
And is there any measurement of what comes out of the city? In other words, will there be any state, federal measurement of the amount of sediment or other nitrogen that flows in the stream that's leaving Falls Church to actually quantify what we're doing? Or is this just based on what you do, we're going to assume it has this result?
So, for that stormwater pollution prevention plan, that is behavioral, and there's less that we can take credit for. But our obligation for water quality is measured in land mass that we treat. It's not measured in water quality in the stream. I mean, ultimately, if, if, if water quality doesn't improve in the Chesapeake Bay, there may be more harsher expectations. But what is expected of the City of Falls Church is to treat a certain amount of area that is not yet treated. And so, every time somebody puts a BMP on private property, every time the city puts, and it gets registered in our inventory, and every time that we build a BMP for water quality, that goes in to our counting. So, when we report to the state every year, we can show that we're on track. And we get to take credit for both private side and public side.
Gotcha. We can't force anybody in the private side or the new developers to do these things. On the city side, essentially, then, do we have a plan to say, okay, every year, if we, if the private side doesn't pick up the slack, we're going to put a new rain garden in, or we're going to put a new sand filter someplace or the other? Do we have basically a plan to do the city side of things to, to reach these goals?
So, there's two ways that we move this forward. One is that through redevelopment, you have to comply with the Chesapeake Bay Preservation Ordinance.
I got that.
We intend that, the expectation at the state so far for redevelopment, and that is mostly what we see in the city, it is a 10% reduction of pollutant loading from what exists today. What we are, you're, we aim to have an ordinance in front of you in May or June this year that changes that requirement, that meets the new state code, which is .4, that you cannot exceed .4, .41 pounds per acre per year. And that's more stringent than the 10% reduction. And so, everything that the private side would build, they would, they would move us in the right direction. The watershed management plan, the $6.7 million projects that are in there outline what we need to do to meet the first five years plus in our permit cycles to, to, to meet the $15 million obligation. Our plan overall is that it's going to take about $15 million of, of infrastructure for water quality alone to meet that obligation. The watershed management plan defines the first five years on, first five years plus a little bit to get to that point. So, as long as we're following this plan that's laid out, we're going to be there.
But if the private sector does more, for example, we don't have to do as much, correct?
Exactly.
Okay. One, one last comment, if I could. At last night's meeting, there was some discussion about storm sewer improvements or facilities that are located on private property that aren't technically part of the city, or that you don't consider part of the city plan or the city system. I would encourage you to try to work with people, because I tell you, you know, some of the stuff that may have happened 50 years ago, it, it seems to me that it still really is providing for the, the overall health of the system. And I'm not sure it's fair, I don't think it is fair for folks to be, you know, having to deal with these issues in a private way that really are truly more systemic city issue.
We, we certainly identified that as we were going through the watershed management plan, that that, that level of service is a gap, and we, we need to work through what we're willing to tackle as a community. And that's through conversations with you. I mean, we, we certainly need to, we have a plan that addresses what we know we own. If you want to address more than what we own, then that will require more money. So, it is a big policy question that will need to be wrestled with at the highest level in the city to move that forward. And I, I certainly look forward to engaging with you guys in that conversation.
Thank you.
Thank you.
This, this is the, you know, the issue. On one hand, we want to save money, we worry about ramping up. On the other hand, we want the, the city to do more customized relationship. So, it's tough to do both. It's tough to, I understand what you're saying, and I'm as interested in efficiencies and more so perhaps than yourself in different areas. But if we want to do these things, then you're going to have to pay for these things, and they can't just be outsourced. We, just so we understand that there are trade-offs between these things.
Mr. Duncan?
Thank you. Just on that point, I mean, we're talking about Hillwood Avenue here. I mean, it's a street that every time we have a meeting about what we're going to do when it rainfalls, you know, the attendance from Hillwood is unusually large, which tells every bright person that we better have a plan that deals with our problems, even if it means that we, you know, have to claim ownership of something that we do not now own and make a trade-off to some area that we do own, that we thought we were going to work on, where the neighbors don't come to us every time we have a meeting about the rainfall. So, as we have this dedicated staff, I know that they will become highly sophisticated on those nuances and that we, we will be told as elected officials what we need to do to make sure that those people are having their needs addressed. That's not what I wanted to actually talk about. Back to the credit program. So, you've pulled this off from some, you know, best management practices. It's not something you had to come up with all on your own, right? I mean, this has been used in some other communities and so forth. Is that fair to say?
I, I think that we, we certainly have looked. We, we worked with AMEC, Jason Wittrum and David Boliva with AMEC, spent a lot of time looking at other programs. One of the key tenets that we need is, we need it to be as simple as possible. We don't want a complicated program. There are programs that are far more complicated than this.
Yeah. The way you were describing it, helped explain why you would need the staff that you've asked for and more if you're going to have, you know, the grass clippings, please. But I'm encouraged to hear that you're not going to do that. So, you would then be able to look or obtain data from these other communities and answer my question, which is, the first 10 people who come up to me and say, hey, I hear we're going to get hit up for 270 bucks for the new rainfall tax. How am I going to get out of that? My answer is going to be based on, you know, other communities that have credit systems like the one that we're imposing here. You know, how many of you? One, two, three? I mean, what percentage of use do you think the credit program would get among residential property owners?
I don't know that answer right now. I certainly will go back in it and look for that answer. Is that fair?
Okay. Sure. No, absolutely. I mean, that's very helpful to know. Is this the part where we talk about the conversation with the faith groups, or does that come after this?
We can. There was just one question that I had on the credit piece. Bill, when do you think we'll have the credit resolution before us?
Well, given no specific comments other than, than what I've heard tonight, then we expect to have this before you next week.
Great. For work session?
I think we're scheduled to talk about it on Thursday. Is that right? Yes, Thursday.
Okay. And that would be exactly the implement, or how the credits would work in the resolution format at that point?
It, it would outline this, this 30% for structural BMPs and 10% for a stormwater pollution prevention plan.
Great. Okay. So, I think we can talk about some of the faith-based and nonprofit issues.
We had a very good meeting today with leaders of six of the churches in the City of Falls Church. And we were hosted by Pastor Dave Kirkland at Duland United Methodist Church. We presented the same information that we presented last night at the town hall meeting, and I think that was very helpful for them to get the context. There was a good discussion for an hour after that presentation. Some of the concerns that were expressed included, sort of in terms of process, I think they were concerned that they, they felt like they were playing catch-up on a policy direction that had already been set. And, and we spoke a little bit about that and the, and the long process that we've gone through to get to this point. They were concerned about their ability to pay. They have, you know, they view themselves as having pretty much fixed budgets, and so they don't have, they weren't quite sure how they were going to pay it. And we did discuss the credit program. We did not go into the level of detail that we went in tonight, because we wanted to have that conversation first with the city council and get your feedback on it. But we did talk about sort of generally what you see out in the industry and across the state for, for credit programs. Lastly, one point that was made is that the churches do have a calendar year, fiscal year, and they're, they did express a pointed concern about making the payment in December when they set their budgets on the calendar year. And, and so, I think those were some of the, the key points that they conveyed. Did I miss any?
No.
Bill?
I think that covered it.
Any questions on that?
Thanks. If I could, I think that's a great summation. Just before I came to the meeting, I got an email from Mike Vulp, who was at the meeting, I think, with Reverend Sledge from Falls Church Presby. And he'd sent an email around to, I guess, a number of people who were either there or were interested. Some of the names are people who were at the meeting last night. Mike was there last night. If I could just share with you all, repeats to some degree what the manager said, but I thought it might be useful to hear it in, in the voice that Mike gave. The, the city officials got a clear message from the faith-based communities. You caught us off-guard with this proposal that will be decided by the city council on April 22nd. You do not have clear details on how the credits will work. You propose this fee to be payable in November, December, when the churches have prepared their budgets for a January to December timeline. You propose this fee on organizations which may be land poor, large buildings with lots of parking, but without the ability to raise rents or generate revenue to cover these costs. You're asking city residents who attend these churches to pay twice, once for their residence and again at the church. And finally, you're asking for a fee which may require the churches to reduce staff or cut back on programs which support the Falls Church community. I, I just offer those not because I have a particular dog on those specific points, but to say that I would anticipate that we would be hearing from some of these folks at our next meeting. And particularly on the credits issue, which you explained, of course, you didn't want to tell them before you told us, which is very commendable. If there's anything that can be done to, you know, inform them as quickly as possible, it might help, I don't want to say tamp down, but it might help inform the comments that they would come to us with at the next meeting. And it might make for a more, you know, productive, general discussion of, of this. I mean, some of the, some of the points, I do share those concerns, and I've mentioned them, so I won't repeat them now. But thank you for meeting with the groups, and I think the way you characterized the meeting was, is entirely accurate and, you know, I would encourage further dialogue all the way through. So thanks.
And I'd also emphasize it was very collegial. I mean, it was a good exchange of information, I think, on, on both sides. We, we listened carefully what they had to say and, but I think there was a feeling of appreciation that, that the communication was happening.
And I think, Phil, you make a good point about trying to get the information about the credits out to the nonprofits and faith-based before we next take it up, now that it's been presented to the council, it may be appropriate to provide them that information so they can provide informed comments back to the council and to staff. Other council members?
Well, we're not going to debate the merits of what they raise, but let's cross tax twice off the list. There's just no credence to that. Is anybody being taxed twice on the same piece of property?
Taxed twice?
No. We're being charged by what square footage exists at a certain place. So they may be paying twice because they are affiliated with two separate pieces of property, but not paying twice. So I just, I want to cut through the things that just are nonsense, and let's focus on the real issues, some of which are legitimate that maybe they raise, just so, because, you know, those things tend to become mantras that will then have 50 people show up at a meeting and repeat the same thing, even though it's meaningless. It's, it's not even a debatable opinion, it's just a factual matter I was trying to clarify.
Okay. That's helpful, Ron. Thanks. Mr. Carter and then Ira.
And I will note, that didn't make my list of the issues that I came away with, but it was expressed.
That's why you've got me here, to read, you know, the rest of the story, as Paul Harvey used to say. Exactly.
This is just follow-up on the last thing about the credits. Nate, it's in.
Yeah, go ahead, Dave.
Just, at our next meeting, are you going to have that list of like the 10 things you need to do to get the credits so that people can actually see the specifics of it?
I, I think that that, I, I think the answer is no. I think, I think we can work very hard to provide you kind of a rough draft of it. But I think that what would be in the resolution is this 30% and the 10%. And you would not have a resolution that named everything. It evolves over time, but we could certainly flesh that out a little bit so it's, it's easy, so you can get your heads around it.
I think it's just not even for us, but for the people in general, like what does it mean? It's kind of this nebulous thing. But if you said, here's the 10 things you have to do, then I think people might have a more comfort that, oh, I can do that if I really want to, that's, that's pretty doable. But a lot of this stuff, BMPs, I think most people don't know what the heck you're talking about. You know, sand filters and a lot of this stuff's very technical. But I think if you had that, it might be helpful, just as we just heard from the faith-based organizations about what is it? If, it sounds like you kind of have the answer already now, let's tell them if we can. Thank you.
All right. Ira? And then Joanna?
I just wanted a second.
Mr. Pepe.
Mr. Pepe, I mean, this should not come up as a rationale again. Thank you.
Ms. Barry?
And, yeah, I, I absolutely agree with, with Mr. Pepe. I think that some, and I think it's important to make the point that, that rhetoric can run away with us. This is, this is kind of silly. And, and I just want to give a little love to staff here because the likelihood that staff can come up with the 10 or 30 specific actions that communities or individuals can take in the next few days, I, I think is, is asking a lot. I think that people should know that there is a range of activities, a significant range of activities. Because as Mr. Carter points out, a rain barrel is one activity, a 50,000-square-foot, you know, cistern, you know, underground cistern is, is quite another. And to be perfectly fair, nobody is going to run out and dig a, dig out a 50,000-square-foot cistern in the next, oh, I don't know, two months. So it's, I think it's, I think it's absolutely, you're absolutely right. It's, it's useful to, to explain, I think, right now, that there's a series of steps that range in sophistication and complexity, and that these are all being part and parcel of this. But to say by, by next week, okay, Duland Methodist, here you go, you know, put in a, again, a 50,000, you know, gallon, whatever, and this is going to take 300 bucks off your bill, I, I think, I think we're, we're fooling ourselves. So I just, again, a little love to the staff because I think it's going to be, I, I think this needs process, and this needs some, some thought. And, and again, I think for the, for the broader community, it's important to know that these things are going to be in place, but they're, but they're not the magic bullet that's going to take care of, of a bill that's probably going to hit their, you know, mailboxes in November, December. And on that note.
Mr. Duncan, did you have anything? Can't tell if you were reaching for your mic or not.
Couldn't even begin to go there. I mean, I just, I respectfully disagree. I mean, I'm not what the love the staff part is. I told Bill last night, we love you. I mean, I just, you know, we've been a city for 65 years this year, and we've never had this rainfall utility apparatus. You know, to me, it is not in any way unreasonable to expect that we would explain every inch and aspect of it that is reasonable. And I don't think these questions that, you know, the communities and citizens are asking are unreasonable before council is asked to, to set it up. I mean, that just seems like, I, I feel like the only thing I've got here is my vote. And, and once I spend that, I got no leverage, really. I mean, you know, people come up once a year at budget time, maybe I send an email. But, you know, now's the time. If, if we don't get it right now, you know, good luck. I mean, maybe it'll work out great, but I don't know. I'm just not in the, I'm in the trust but verify school.
I guess, yeah, I, I'm not sure where that, that, that comment's coming from because I think we're all listening and hearing those comments and taking them in. In fact, we took specific actions during the budget process and, and the amount that we approved to ensure that we had the options available. So, you know, I, I think that we are hearing the comments that are coming in from the public and taking them in and trying to address them the best we can and make informed decisions. But, you know, and at the end of the day, we're going to have to vote on it.
You know, I get that. A specific question about the budget, last night we learned that the amount you've allocated is 105,000 for the credit program, which I said, okay, is that enough? Is it too much? I have no idea. But you obviously have an idea based on something that, that is going to be enough to fund the credit program in the first six months or year, right?
Yes. We, we have looked at it, and I don't, I haven't run those numbers myself, and I'm at a disadvantage that my stormwater guy's not here right now. But we have looked at it in association with our consultant, and we think that this is, this is manageable in the budget that we've laid out.
And if we have 4,500 parcels and 105,000 for credits, you know, those, those numbers add up. I mean, some percentage of that 4,500 will seek the credits. The range will be from 27 bucks to 300 bucks. And somewhere in, inside all that lies the answer to why you settled on 105,000.
Right.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Question to you, Dave. Bill, let me ask.
We also have the facilities to tackle this one.
Okay, I'll, I'll be fairly quick. Bill, does this apply the credits to things that people are, A, that are already in the ground? For example, hey, three years ago, I put a, you know, I had to put a, an underground cistern in to get my permit to do my house. Do they get a credit?
Yes.
Okay. And a commercial site that's brand-new, that's developing, that's required to do it as part of their, you know, voluntary concessions, et cetera, they get the credit as well?
Yes.
Okay. So basically, everybody who does a BMP, regardless of their motivation or when in history they did it, will get a credit? It's not just to encourage behavior going forward, but also reward behavior that's already occurred before this even, the plan even came to light?
Yes. As long as we can document that in accordance with what I laid out earlier, that that engineering standard is there, it's got a BMP agreement, they're claiming ownership and responsibility for it, and we can go out and inspect it. But the answer is yes, whether you build it, you built it four years ago, or you're going to build it in four years.
Okay. I think we're on to facilities. So more to come on this on Thursday next week.
All right, so we've got the, we've got the CIP. We're going to talk about transportation. Do we have time for transportation?
I think Bill can do it in very few minutes because he's done some highlights already. And maybe while he does that, I'll pass out a CIP summary PowerPoint that I'm not going to go through. But what it does is provide in one consolidated location, all the CIP discussions that we've had during these work sessions since this year, we tied the CIP to the operating budget that you discussed that night. So I would just want to highlight the transportation ones. They are slide nine on page five of what I just handed out. And Bill, and in your CIP, it'd be on page 227 in your budget book. And then we'll be able to move right into facilities, which will be a highlight follow-up from our January 17th joint work session. So Bill, if I could have you highlight the transportation ones that you maybe have not already spoken to.
So under the, the second dash down there, the, the street sign replacement, the manual on uniform, traffic control, I'm sorry?
Be quick on that.
Yeah. It's not very sexy, but all of our regulatory signs have to be replaced. We laid out a program, this is the second year of that program. So there's money in this budget to move that forward. There is grant money, so that comes out every year through the RSTP, the Regional Surface Transportation Grant monies. That is allocated in FY15 and beyond, that 1.2 million dollars for pedestrian and traffic bike improvements, traffic calming improvements citywide. We have a project to, to apply for, continue our roadbed assessment and apply for reconstruction of our roadways and milling and overlaying maintenance monies to, to leverage our, our $275,000 of money these, moving forward. We have a traffic signal management, we often called it the closed-loop traffic signal system. Faster. Holy spokes. We got a second phase on that. We have a utility relocation project which focuses on the remaining portions of Broad Street to underground, our utilities there. Bridge replacement, I spoke about those three bridges. We start with that project next year. We think we can leverage federal monies, but we need to spend monies to be able to qualify. And the W N O D trail improvements, I think directly results from CACT work that Planning Department has been working with, CACT.
Thanks, Bill. Any questions on the transportation piece?
Sorry, I was so slow.
I want to go back to that double-loop signal, whatever that was. Closed-loop, thank you. So no commercial transportation tax overlay. At some point in even my history, there was some discussion that we might do that, but we're not doing that, right?
There is the discussion in the past to do it, and we will revisit that as we move forward with the new state transportation. But in this budget, there is no additional transportation tax overlay proposed.
Bigger issue under the new state.
Right, exactly. I remember.
Statewide, and we need a transportation plan of projects first.
We're not, we're not losing anything by, by not doing that, though, right?
Well, that's what's changing. City of Manassas and Falls Church City were the only two that complained about it when we were making amendments.
And council members, I'm, I'm going to try to move us along.
Okay, thank you.
Because we have, and just so you know why I'm trying to move us along, we have some facilities discussions that I think we need to focus in on because they're going to be the big drivers. So I want to make sure that we have time and people have the energy left to discuss those bigger items.
And we will be back on the transportation discussion for sure. So, moving on to facilities. And that's the facility one.
Yeah.
All right. This evening, what we'd like to do is touch base on facility issues, both city hall and the schools. This is a highlight, high-level follow-up from the January 17th work session. And I have with me this evening the general government facility master plan that we discussed. And Superintendent Jones is with us this evening with the school CIP, which serves as their facility master plan for this five-year period. We know TJ was in the previous two years. And then their full facility plan is posted on the website. And as part of the discussion, I also can, I brought back some answers to the questions that were raised on the city hall, public safety. So Mayor, I, before I start on the city hall one, I'd like to pause and see if you would like to talk about the school projects or have Superintendent Jones answer any of the questions. We've talked about what's in their CIP. She went through the enrollments and how they got to their cost figures and...
Let's, let me ask council that. Are there specific questions that we have on the school CIP at this point?
And in summary, that's page 228 of your CIP in terms of just project names and dollars. And so that would be Cherry Street for FY14 for 2.4 million, Mount Daniel for 1 million for the A and E planning and the work around zoning and site plans with the county. And then the second year in FY15 would be the construction for Mount Daniel. And then in the 15, 16 timeframe as proposed by the city manager would be the George Mason High School, following decisions by the voters on the referendum and the boundary line adjustment. That totals 99 million and 500,000. And then FY17 would be Mary Ellen Henderson, which is a 10-classroom wing addition to the middle school for 5 million.
Ira? Question, since, I don't want to get too far ahead of ourselves, but we don't know, let's assume that this sale goes forward and we're given the roughly 12 acres to work with. Why would we be expanding Mary Ellen without knowing what 12 acres would yield us the best return?
I think, question's about the expansion of Mary Ellen Henderson?
If you actually look in the CIP where it has the growth tables, it has to do with when the building reaches capacity. And so we're looking at, and this kind of goes to the question I think we were asked the other night, the intent is not to knock Mary Ellen Henderson down, which means that in order to expand, because we will be at capacity fairly quickly, we need to be able to expand on that existing building. And so there's, what you see in here is reflective of needing a wing, assuming that the city... the city continues to grow and our enrollment growth continues.
I understand that, but you were then precluding, well, first of all, I, I understand this has been in there, though, at some point, unfortunately, Ms. Barry has left, we were under the impression that the hundred million included, uh, a new Mary Ellen Henderson building. That was the impression that was left. Let me finish.
Okay, I was just gonna say, it's always been George Mason High School, though, even last year. And that's when it showed up in the CIP first. We've never ever mentioned MEH with that, so I just, I mean, I would encourage you to go back and look at last year's CIP.
Going back to the other issue, uh, if we were to get the optimum amount of value, if we expand that wing, then that is off the table for future development. If we have twelve acres where we negotiated with Fairfax that we could decide, you know, again, if the referendum is approved, where the twelve acres is? Now, is, I didn't realize that this would, this already precludes that area then, from any, no matter how, how valuable it may be?
Well, it doesn't really, 'cause that's why when you look at the CIP and you look at the years and how it's laid out, GM falls first. And then the idea is for that wing to come at the very end of the GM expansion, so that your, when all of your contractors and everybody is on site, you're not having to pay extra to come back and do that. But if, in fact, we had some wonderful plan, um, and, and everybody agreed at the city level that you wanted to knock Mary Ellen down, and it was more economical to do that, I'm sure everybody would be on board. But this is really to let us in the CIP know, as it stands right now, when we build GM at the tail end of that project, we will need to expand at Mary Ellen Henderson. And right now, the, you know, the plan would be to expand the building as-is, but of course, if something, you know, should arise that would be a phenomenal opportunity, I'm sure the school board and the city council would both be supportive.
And Mayor, could I, one thing, the reason these are also in the fifteen, sixteen, seventeen timeframe is, one, we can't presuppose what's gonna happen on the voter referendum, but I think part of what Mr. Kalin's getting to is, first, before even we do any A and E work on the high school, there needs to be a concept plan, some feasibility study for, as Mr. Snyder referred to, the area plan and the zoning for that land, 'cause we need to figure out which is the part of land that's best for the redevelopment, and maybe that land that we wanna have, sell off and have economic development. That would dictate, then, where is the high school, and then that would dictate sort of which side of the school the wing would go on.
And if I might just add, the school board is very apprised of that. They've done a lot of work over the last couple of years, and even with the Dewberry study, if you go online or you look at the facilities master plan, it shows the high school in several different locations. And we were actually knee-deep into that process, again, really moving forward to be able to assess our land, but we did stop at the request of City Council until the referendum in November, so we're very fully apprised that we need to do that assessment. And we're just waiting to do that.
Mr. Kalin?
Also, see, five-hundred thousand for the, uh, studies. Says George Mason High School Construction School Board adopted, da-da-da. So five-hundred thousand for the A and E, uh, engineering studies, design and engineering?
The five-hundred thousand was, you know, if the referendum should pass, and it's not actually in the CIP unless that's changed tonight. Did that change, Cindy?
It's FY-15.
What's actually a-
The five-hundred thousand is in for FY-15, for A and E, for the high school. Any concept plan and area planning for the land we're talking about, where the high school and middle school currently sits, was part of the boundary line adjustment, would need to be an operating budget item funded.
Well, when, what year did you expect to have the referendum on the hundred-million-dollar bond issue?
Well, you know, right now, that's not, I mean, that's not my decision, but the way the CIP is laid out, and the way it was presented, was we had actually requested the five-hundred thousand after the referendum in November, so we could start the planning process, because-
But what does that, wait a second. I mean, that, that's a separate issue. The, the referendum is for the sale of the water system, period.
Well, but it, but it affects our land, so we, we've stopped the planning process until we know, um, whether or not that land is falling under Foster City, is it gonna stand or Fairfax, what, you know, is that land held to seventy percent? Is some educational, you know, planning about, so we're waiting on that, as the, as the city council had requested, so I'm not sure I understand your question.
Let me clarify for you.
Okay.
If you have ninety-nine million dollars that you want to spend for debt for the high school, there's no, there's no certainty that it will be approved. You don't know what the outcome, the voters will decide the year that referendum comes up. So you're gonna spend five-hundred thousand dollars in advance of that, on the, on the bet, a wager, that that ninety-nine million dollars will be approved?
I think we're talking two referendums, so if I can make sure Dr. Jones is clear, as I realize the conversation. One is the voter referendum for the water sale, the other is council's, um, uh, policy for a referendum for any project over ten percent. And that one theoretically could be in, um, November two thousand and fourteen, if the other one proceeds, so.
I was told to, to stop it.
Yeah, I'm sorry.
Mr. Kalin, I, I wanna make a point. Mr. Kalin, is your point that the, that the-
I stand corrected.
The ninety-nine million dollar project is certainly gonna be dependent on a voter referendum, because that meets the threshold, so why are we expending five-hundred thousand dollars in planning, not knowing what the voters are gonna do? Is that, is that the question?
Yes.
So, is your suggestion that maybe it needs to come up in one referendum?
Well, I don't think you, I'm not sure you can borrow for, uh, this type of activity. There's no, I mean, if the referendum for the building isn't approved, where's the asset that's behind, this is just a liability with nothing behind it?
Well, and, and we, when we put five-hundred thousand dollars in for planning, that is so that we could not even go to referendum for a project of this magnitude within, without having some great planning in place before you would ever take that out to the community. Even the visioning aspect of, of what it would look like and what it would be, and where on the land would it go, it did just cost money to do that. The design work takes place well before you could ever take this project to the community. So, you know, if, if the city, and again, we had it in here for this year, and it's not funded, um, but if it should be funded, it could be pay-go, I mean, that would be their decision, not mine, but, um, that's why it's in there, so we can be prepared. You know, we, we, we hear loudly and clearly that people wanna know, you know, and want everything to be well-planned, which the school board's working incredibly hard to do. And that's just one piece of that, is making sure there's a good, solid plan before you would take it to the community, and working with the community to get the plan.
Well, I'm, I'm not sure that I, you know, that you have to spend five-hundred thousand dollars to get a pretty good idea for the community. What is the, the level of detail that the community could absorb is only, you know, so high? Five-hundred thousand dollars is almost two cents on the tax rate, so we're just gonna pay-go?
No.
And then we're gonna pay extra for that during that tax year?
Everything that you're doing when you're planning is actually part of the process, so it's not wasted money, you have to do that piece. And in that five-hundred thousand, that's also assuming that you have, you have land elements on that property, as well as the design work, that you would have to do in order to get to that point. But I will say, I mean, maybe this is a mute point, 'cause it's not in the CIP, correct? Like, right now?
Well, it's there, and it's in twenty-fifteen, and, and that is, the thinking behind that is to do planning work and conceptual work, um, to some extent, before it would go to the voters for the ninety-nine, you know, for the high school project. And I do think that that's sound planning, because it would, it would be a very difficult question for the voters to vote on without a picture as to, um, what it is we're trying to accomplish. Now, but at any rate, that is what the, the CIP stands for.
Well, that, you need something, but five-hundred thousand is a lot of money. And a ninety-nine million dollar bond issue, you know, series that adds up to ninety-nine million dollars, right, if we use your twenty-to-one for Arlington and a hundred-to-one for Fairfax, that's equivalent to a two-billion-dollar school for Arlington, and a hundred-billion-dollar school for Fairfax. I mean, this, I mean, in proportion, this is a very, very large project for the city. And then to spend five-hundred thousand dollars, I don't know, no one can predict exactly what the outcome will be of this. I don't know what the rating agency was, will say about our ability to borrow that much money at this stage. So I'm just leery of spending five-hundred thousand dollars. Isn't there something less detailed that can get the point across without spending that much money, given the uncertainty that would surround a ninety-nine million dollar bond issue?
I think so. But I do think that's also a question for the twenty-fifteen budget, as it's presented here. And, but a lot of the back and forth between myself and, and the, and the school staff has been whether we're gonna fund that in FY-14, and on that point, my recommendation was to fund it in twenty-fifteen. I, I think the schools would prefer to do it, um, sooner than that, but, and, just in terms of giving ourselves time to get through the referendum and then scope this study properly, it, it seems reasonable to me for that to be a twenty-fifteen budget issue.
But, again, for planning purposes, if we do wanna indicate that we think the planning amount is higher than we would anticipate, I think we can work on that number. So we've got it, if I can finish, we, so we have it as a planning document, knowing that the funds aren't gonna be obligated until fifteen. So, Mr. Kalin, that may be something you would want to consider raising. But I leave that, leave that to you. To me, it seems like a pretty big number, not knowing that we're gonna go out to bond. So if there's a way of, of getting something that gets the information out, but gives the voters, I, I think the, the difficulty is, it's such a large number, it almost pre-assumes that you're gonna follow up, because you've already expended five-hundred thousand dollars, so why not just pull the lever and say, okay, to the ninety-nine, 'cause it's such a, it seems like such a high number? And it is, so there, there may be a way of scaling some of that back.
The, the study work and the part to be funded in FY-15 for the study, both for the city as to what our concept plan and what we're gonna sell, and conceptually what the school would look like for a voter referendum level, was, is operating money not a CIP project? 'Cause it's a study. So that would be funded in FY-15. This five-hundred was to preserve the actual school's resources for A and E and the final design, and, and additional work after the voter referendum. It wasn't intended to be funded, the information to build for a voter referendum for a hundred-million-dollar school.
So what, so that gets to the point, so now, I'm totally confused about why it's happening before the referendum.
The referendum would be November fourteen-
I see.
-which is in FY-15, and as part of that budget, you would have the operating money, if, you have operating money to design for the voter referendum, if the voter referendum passes within that year, which would be after November, you would have the money for the schools to proceed. The voter referendum fails, then-
No, no money's expended, the five, the five-hundred thousand dollars is not expended.
Nor is the ninety-nine million.
Got it, okay. That makes a bit more sense, especially if we're talking about A and E, that's not the, what I was hearing earlier.
The school had asked for more money upfront, but the study piece to get to voter referendum and the feasibility for the land is, is operating money.
It's something much smaller than this. Okay, that makes sense.
How much is the, the operating expense for the, the initial study, then?
We really haven't developed into the detail for FY-15, um, but, you know, for the, for a combined school concept for voter referendum, and for the concept feasibility study for the area planning, and what part might be redeveloped for mixed use, I think you're gonna be talking still a couple hundred thousand for that combined effort.
And, and when-
Mr. Carter, and then Mr. Knox.
I was gonna say, if you throw in economic development planning, or how to, to plan for these eleven acres, you could absolutely be talking five-hundred grand, because you have transportation improvements, a lot of things to consider. If it's just the schools and for the referendum, I hear what you're saying, but I think when you get beyond that, if the referendum is approved, then I think you're talking at least that much money.
Absolutely, if, if we're going beyond, I'm just talking about the school, I'm not talking about the other parts right now.
And, and are we spending anything out of the operating budget in this fiscal year to do anything up there in the way of a concept plan, or is all this gonna be put off till FY-15?
We, we actually stopped everything. I mean, we were, um, you know, working as a school board on, on lots of work there, and whenever the water deal changed our direction, we just stopped. So we are on hold until we're ready to pick it up and move again.
Right. Anything else on the school piece? Reston, Mr. Snyder?
Just, um, generally speaking, um, I would assume in your planning for the, the high school, that there isn't a built-in assumption of any particular result. That is, you're gonna look at renovation, you're gonna look at new, you're gonna look at a wide range of options, is that right?
What is in the, what you see in the CIP right now, and, and if you flip back a couple of pages, it is looking at new construction with the price that's in here, and it's at three-hundred-and-seventy-five dollars a square foot, and it's, it's programming for a new high school. That doesn't mean, obviously, when we get to that point, a lot of that depends on, you know, what happens, and, and with this whole economic development piece, does that actually change the opportunities that we have? We will hope that it does, um, and so, it's just too early for us to make that determining factor, because, you know, I think we're very realistic about, you know, the city and finances, and, um, everybody wants a new high school, but if we reach a point where that's not an option, the school board's gonna do, I think, just like they have on all of the other projects that we're working on, to do our very best, to come up with the best project that we can fund, um, and do a great job. But the, the goal is to try to have a new high school, we hope.
The, the next issue is relating to this, that we have the Northern Virginia Graduate Center sitting up sort of in the middle of all of this, and I would urge that there be some frank and mutually beneficial discussion with them, as to what their future plans are, is there a way to integrate the two and provide some significant, um, benefits of scale? So I would hope that in the planning process, we're including that component into whatever else we're thinking about, as well as, if we decide we wanna develop and it's feasible and we can do it, parts of the existing site. I mean, that part has been talked about, but the other element up there that's not been talked about is the grad center, and how we might integrate more effectively with them, and thereby save money.
I will say, that's the one thing that I think we've established this year, is a great relationship with the grad center, and even working on this fencing issue, um, which you know as far as one of our safety features. Um, everybody from UVA and Virginia Tech, that's part of their planning and their real estate development, um, has been around the table with us, so we all have a great relationship. And I'm sure that when we get closer to really being able to plan for GM, uh, there could be some great discussions in partnership there.
Mayor? Reiterate that I had mentioned earlier, and I, I've mentioned it again to consider, that for FY-14, now, the, the referendum is in FY-14 for the sale of the water system, correct?
Yes.
So you have from now until November to do some, you know, studies and announce, and bring it up this year? Bring it up in FY-14, then we can have, you know, the referendum for the, the amount of money that's required?
Yeah, we, we do not have the funding for the land attorneys and the study and, and everything that we would, we would need to do between down November to even prepare for that. But I mean, I appreciate your thoughtfulness, and, um, you know, we're all very, very eager to be able to work on that campus, and so, I'm appreciative of that, it's just right now, I know that, just because I know where all the pennies are, that we couldn't fund it.
Land attorney?
Well, whenever you're dealing with land and, and assuming that, that, you know, the referendum passes, we, I mean, we have to consult on our land and knowing where best to put things, and there's just so much involved in the, the planning aspect of anything that has to do with construction. And so for us, it's gonna be a big planning process.
Okay, but I, I would've thought if we wanted to avoid, you know, ongoing conversations, that we could've accelerated the process and get it considered, uh, and I mentioned this earlier, uh, this, you did, I'm not sure I understand all the ins and outs and all your concerns and so forth, but I don't know how much detail is gonna be necessary to see if the voters are prepared to agree to a ninety-nine million dollar bond issue, or a series of issues.
And I really, I sincerely mean it, we are appreciative that you have made that suggestion, but it just, it will take a lot of planning and a lot of community engagement, and, you know, just, just to get TJ ready, I mean, it, it took a lot, that's only two, twenty-two thousand square feet, and we own the land, it just, this is a, a very, it is a very big building, and there are lots of other layers that go along with it, so we wanna be respectful of the community, make sure everybody's engaged and at the table.
Before the, before the-
When we get ready into the planning phase, when we get ready for the planning phase, and you're talking about then, this coming November?
Well, I'm talking about just getting approval, I mean, before, you're, I understand there's a bit of a, a circularity here, but you wanna spend and you wanna do a lot of work in the planning before you know whether you have the financing for the project. If, for some reason, the referendum for the ninety-nine million is not approved, or that amount isn't approved, these are stranded costs. So it would strand less costs if we had enough to go forward this year. You get the approval for the ninety-nine million, and then there'd be less risk that we'd have costs that then just have to be absorbed by the taxpayers, because the numbers going forward are pretty awesome.
Right, and, and I can tell you, we will be absolutely prudent, um, you know, and make sure that we watch out for every single penny, and, you know, I was- watch out for every single penny and, you know, I was involved in a $142 million bond issue right when I left my previous school district, which for Northern Virginia would be over 200 million in projects. And in all of that planning and everything that has to take place, I just, you know, as the superintendent of the school, I want to make sure that we've engaged the right people and that people know what's going on and, and it's going to be, it is critically important in the planning phase. And so it'll just take some time for us to do that and work through it.
And remember, we've got a cost estimate of how much our risk is, what our risk exposure will be in terms of costs if the referendum is not approved, when we have a dollar value.
And if I, can I just also, we don't necessarily know what that planning phase will be. You know, there are so many different aspects and that's why I think we're really trying to be respectful of, of what the council has asked us to do. We've stopped. You know, we're not planning right now. So, you know, if you, for instance, did something like you did with TJ and it was a PPEA, it totally changes the expense and the outlay in comparison if you're just trying to do a bond issue from scratch. So those sorts of issues, the school board will definitely be having lots of discussion, but we're just trying to be respectful of what council has asked us to do.
I, I have to confess, I didn't really understand that explanation. I just ask, it'll probably show up in next, next year's school budget request in the FY15 then, how much money do you think it will cost or you will ask for to do those, you know, just a ballpark estimate, give me a range? That's what I'm, that's the only thing I'm asking.
Thank you.
Do we get that?
I think after November, we'll be able to come back to you by this time next year. We'll be prepared for you.
Yeah.
And to have more solid numbers for you.
Yeah. So I think, I think sort of the parking lot issue, if I can just summarize that, is, I'm hearing it is, what are the costs of preparing this item to go to the voters in a referendum format?
Right.
What are the expenses that are going to be on? And it's going to be on the operating budget side. All right. Anything else on the school, Seth?
I have Mr. Tarter. Two questions. One, if the new, if the 11 acres or 12 acres, 11 and a half, whatever it is, is carved off and the school MEH and either a reconfigured high school, a new high school, renovated high school are all on that remaining, I can't remember, 22 acres or so, is there a possibility that MEH could stay as it is or is there just really no possibility when you're trying to cram, you know, a high school on that same property? Is there even a possibility MEH could stay where it is or do you pretty much have to demo it or not have the possibility of having a high school on there?
Well, and, and again, you know, we started this year doing quite a bit of preliminary work and we're, and we're very fortunate because when you have like Arcadis on site right now for another project, you can kind of ask them a lot of questions. It absolutely, the footprint of GM right now is enormous because it, it wasn't built to be a multi-story necessarily in lots of areas, so every time they've added on, it's spread it out. If you actually look at the aerial view of MEH and you look at the aerial view of GM, there's only about 100,000 square foot different, about 122,000 square feet. So if you think about a multi-story high school, it easily, you could easily fit. And one of the discussions, and that's why you see it reflected in here, is we even talked about in our work sessions for facilities, is that if we built GM and how could we actually, you know, have opportunities to place it very close to MEH where you actually could join the two buildings so that you could have the new wing actually flow over into the new high school so that your eighth graders who need advanced classes, you could share more staff, it's very economical, you actually, depending on what sort of design our architect could do for us, I've seen lots of joined buildings where they've been able to share the cafeterias, totally separate cafeterias, but you're able to cook in the same spot and just, it's very, very cost effective. So we'll be exploring all of those options and it definitely, as far as the footprint, could, could fit there. And that's one of the reasons we've held off on that soccer field. We had somebody who wanted to donate, which is about 400,000, to put turf on the soccer field, somebody that is a rental person. But in order to do that, it was making a commitment that you're not going to touch the soccer field for many years because if, if you allow somebody to make that sort of donation. So we've kept all those options open.
So that, just to summarize, you could actually take carve off 11 acres, build a new high school or highly renovated high school and keep the current MEH in its current place, same general configuration without tearing it down or ripping it apart?
Well, and I think that will all be part of the planning phase. So, you know, do you start digging in the ground and find something you didn't know was there from 60 years ago? So I just, you know, I always caution that, but as far as the footprint and placement, absolutely.
Okay. Another question, the fence that was discussed a few minutes ago and a few months ago, is that impacted off, for example, if 11 acres are carved off, things are reconfigured, does that do something with your fence? Like geez, well, you know, we've got to tear that fence out now? Or how does the fence and the possible carving off 11 acres play out together?
What we're doing on, on the front line, which would be the side that runs along, not Route 7, Haycock, is that that fencing could be moved and, and that would be pretty easy. There are big openings on the other side and then the backside behind the baseball's existing fencing. So there's actually a lot of existing fencing that's already there. So we're making sure that we would be able to move that fencing if we should want to do that.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Ira?
Thank you for the explanation. And we're, you know, heavy into the planning aspects and so forth, but I continue to be concerned on how we're, you know, even if the, the citizens thought it was a great idea to do the 99 million, can the city actually absorb a debt of that size? That's, so it's, I'm just not sure, you know, that if you go super down the planning, that we get to the point where it's got to be approved?
Right.
And it doesn't mean, you know, that the markets are going to be cooperative or the rating agencies are going to be cooperative. And the actual cost, if it were today's interest rates as opposed to whatever it turns out to be at the time, the debt issue. And we will certainly pay a premium for the size of this issue vis a vis our financial and economic base. So just, you really just don't know about the absorptive capacity for the city.
Right. And, and again, we're very mindful of that and I think that, you know, I think we're very hopeful that with the changes that are happening in the next six months or 12 months with the land, that we will have more opportunity so that it won't cost 99 million. I think we're all very hopeful that that won't be the case.
Just one, if I could. I'm sorry, I'd step out for a second. Did I miss the, remind me about Mount Daniel. What, what are we doing with the million this year for Mount Daniel?
Mount Daniel's actually starting. You know, Arcadis was in, on the very first time that we, well, the last time that we expanded there. And we all know that it will take probably a full year just for the permitting process. So that's making sure, we just split it over the two years and had requested that so that we could get started because it is in Fairfax County and we have a lot of work to do there. And we don't really know how far we'll be able to get in the first year, but we, we know we need to go as quickly as we can just because we're out of space.
All right. Thanks, Tony.
Thank you. Thanks, Tony. All right. So this is going to be expedited shortened version, but a, a, a follow-up to the January 17th work session where we had the joint facilities. And so I've brought back some answers to questions that came from there in terms of massing and parking. And then I have brought back the master facility plan that shows a 22-year layout, but in particular, the milestone and the timing as the other question. So first I will do, and I think the PowerPoints already went out for the one that I have up there that says public safety. Yeah.
Yeah.
And then the other handout I'll do in a minute.
Okay.
So, I don't know, Kathy, could you do the lights for me? That would be great. I have the City Hall massing as a YouTube flyby that really helps describe this, but given the late hour, I'm not going to go through it that way tonight, but I'll email you the link so that if you choose to see it in an animated form, you can do that. This slide is just brought forward from January 17th as a refresher in this one document since it'll go up for the public, for what the City Hall Public Safety Project key issues will address. This is the refresher from the task force and sort of where we went from 2011 till now. Didn't go all the way back to when we started this in 2007. This is a synopsis of how the square footages have changed over the time from the 2008 PSA Dewberry Study to an update in 2011. And then what's before you from 2012 and before you this evening where the expansion is solely 7,500 square feet now. And that is able to be adjusted from economic downturns, the sale of the water, reconfiguring and changing less of the bones of the internal building. So with that 7,500 square feet, that's 15% increase to the building and none of my, pointers are working this evening. There we go. 46% of this, which I'll walk through quickly, will be for public safety. This is the CIP synopsis for the City Hall Public Safety. It is also in your budget book, but I just pulled out that related to City Hall. And you'll see the critical renovations, the, everything in gray, council has already appropriated in previous fiscal years. And for the critical renovations, as a quick refresher, and all of it's in detail in the master plan notebook that we gave you in January, is the elevators, the sprinklers, the roof, and the design for the HVAC is in the FY13. FY14 would, is proposed for the construction of the HVAC system and the window replacement. The front expansion is fully funded and the rear expansion, A&E, is funded. Then FY14 would be the request for the construction piece. And I'll talk about the milestones and the timing of that where we show the public input process and bid process and other touch points council will have before we actually construct, but after we do some A&E. And council has fully funded the front parking structure. Now, in these, um, non-animated building of the project, I'm going to walk you through, there's two color schemes. The green refers to the public safety items and the gray refers to the existing or new government services that are in addition. And I have in the audience with me this evening, I think they're still with us? We have our two sheriff representatives and police as well as our city employee from the advisory group who were very involved in the task force, but also involved in these issues. And so they're here if there's any questions on, in particular, on the public safety or the task force, as Danae served on that as well. So here you have the existing City Hall with the HVAC in the rear. And for those, you all know the east and west wing, but this was for Planning Commission, the public. G3 is police on the east wing, that's existing green. G2 on the east wing is existing, that's where our elevator, mechanical buildings and so forth are. We are currently sitting in G1 and so that's the Dogwood and HHS and the corridor out in front of us. What would be new is a G1 corridor and that actually is outside of the G corridor behind the sheriff personnel behind me and where the photos are. So that would actually be below grade in the, outside that wall. There'd be an underground parking structure and you can see that it's at grade to the G1 and that would be where the secured public safety vehicles are, sheriff, police, animal warden, evidence room for dead animals that Chief Gavin has spoken to you about in January. It also would be where the secured police could come in to that area. They could exchange weapons and materials between vehicles. It's also the secured area where the sheriff's office could have the judge enter, which would mean the judge would enter in the front. And back here is the Sallyport that's sitting behind Councilman Tarter and that's where the prisoners would come in. So we'd be separating not Mr. Tarter, but the judge from the prisoners. L1 and L on both east and west wing are existing. On the east wing with L1, on the top of the screen is where you all would find the Commissioner of Revenue, Treasurer and Voter Register, for example. And right now on L1 west wing is engineering, HR and real estate. The plan would be that this could become a meeting room for the public when we bring in the central front entrance. Behind where council is sitting, or the bulk of council is sitting, would be L1 and that's the first floor of office space to connect the two east and west wings. There's court chambers and then our existing third floors. Remember, we're a split four, so even, split foyer, so even on the east and west wing, there's no second floor. There's a public entrance that we've talked about in the front that then allows for central entrance for public, for court, for evening meetings, security and easy wayfinding. And you would have easy entrance up here into the east wing. This would be on grade into the L1 of west wing, which would allow for that meeting room. So Dogwood would go upstairs. You'd have small meetings room here for the Housing Commission, Tree Commission, defenders, mediation for court. And so that would all be secure for wayfinding. And then the area where we are now becomes the police dispatch, emergency operations center is mostly in this room physically now in the hallway. And then where HHS is becomes the secure area for the sheriff's function and gives them more space retaining behind chambers, a judge's chambers and a small meeting room for the judge or council closed session. And then L3 would be the second floor behind where council's sitting. There would be a connecting corridor, so now citizens and staff could go from east wing to west wing without going downstairs, coming to the G corridor and back up, which is very confusing for citizens. This would also give us a space for development services and public works to be located because if we moved Dogwood upstairs on grade with the central entrance, obviously Bill and his staff will need a place to work and so we would relocate them up here. The IT staff that are down in the server room next to the mechanical room would move up. And then our facility manager, who's currently cohoused with the senior program corner at the community center, would move over to City Hall. The additional piece with this is that we would move the HVAC units that are in the cooling tower back here, up on the roof, increasing parking here for all of the public works vehicles and other recs and park and HHS and zoning, so they're not out where the public tries to park. We'd be able to consolidate. And because you have two levels here, the secured is underneath and the public is parking up top. This plan picks up 40 additional parking spaces. It also allows, because we will have put cover over here and corrected structural construction issues, will stop the flooding into City Hall, which happens in the lower police levels of G, of the east wing, level three. It also helps down into the west wing, lower level into our server and telecom rooms. And this hallway out here, sort of behind where Kathy's standing right now, regularly floods because we have water seepage in here. So we'll be able to correct all of those issues with this project. And this is just a quick, if we were in the animation, you would fly around City Hall. So this, which is kind of a fun effect. So we thank Garrison and Jim's staff for doing the animation, so I'll send you all the links. This is a synopsis, the City Hall campus parking, because I know there's been a lot of questions about doing that versus the grid parking in the back. We create 45 spaces initially in the City Hall. We had tried to do some parking behind council where, is sitting for the security fence and do grid in the parking. There's not enough room to do the fencing properly and have ability for the police to get their vehicles in and out. We actually lose space and we would have to remove the trees and all of the parking in the back. But this park solution gives us secure police, sheriff and courts, as mentioned before and as we discussed in January, addresses the flooding. We have secure weather protection and security training for our public safety. And with the grid that I'll show you, we would have significant stormwater and tree impacts. This one does not do that. We actually pick up about 10 feet in the front that gives us more space for the farmer's market, which we know gets tight in the walkway. There, an early plan, we had tried to do a grid and I'll show you a picture of that. It would still cost 450,000 and you have constraints on travel. We don't have the secure, security and we have to take out all the trees in the back. This is a visualization up top of sort of how the current parking lot configuration of City Hall and the community center is, is how it's built through the back. And here is how you could see, you would come in off a park and go out on little falls for the below grade and you'd still have your above grade. There's 11-foot. There's 11-foot drop between here to there, and so this top grade basically still is where the current parking is, and you just have minimal excavation because you have the 11-grade shift. This is what we had designed and tried to design if we did a grid in the back. So stepping back for a minute, that's what it looks like now. And then you would go with this. So obviously you have to take out all those islands and the trees in order to create this. This also still requires moving the cooling towers in order to get a more traditional grid pattern here. It's very tight here, and we're not encroaching into Cherry Hill Farmhouse. So that was some follow-up on the parking questions that I had from a couple council members. And then I put this slide back in from January, because that was an earlier question that...
Cindy, I'm sorry, can you go back to that previous slide?
Mm-hmm.
So is this plan not doable?
It's not doable in that we don't have enough room here to fence and still have the excess, and you absolutely can't put that parking. And you have to take out all of the trees and the islands, and you're encroaching more into Cherry Hill and the community center to square it off to get the 45 additional spaces.
I have some more questions on this, but we can come back.
Be glad to. This is just brought forward again from January to, if there was questions, you all had verbally indicated that we were not building a school site here. And then what I'd like to do is just hand out this document. I'm going to let it get around, and it'll describe the long-range planning. I thought I sent some that way. But more in particularly, I'll call your attention to the milestones and the timing of this project, because that was questions from January. Yeah, thanks, Ken. The first sheet you saw in January 17th, that the joint facility work session with the bottom part, that's labeled general government. And this is a 22-year vision of last two previously approved CIPs, the current five-year CIP in purple, and then five-year increments going forward, so we can start looking at the long-range planning. The second page is just the five-year projections pulled out of the current budget. And if I could call your attention to page three. In January, there were some questions about what would be the timing and the layout of this, and how can we ensure that we have some public input in the process. And so I've just highlighted the key activities that would be worked on with the City Hall Public Safety project, some of which are underway now and some which will be proceeding. The roof, sprinkler, elevators, and police evidence are tied to the critical renovations piece that council's approved, and they're proceeding along in the timeframes that you see there. And this is set out in quarters, so that I could get it all in one page and kind of give you the timing. It's not granular down to a month or week level. But if you were to look then, getting to the central front entrance down to the HVAC windows, those are the core, big projects that we've been talking about. And you can see how we would be doing bid development, starting in this quarter, fiscal year 13, and then moving into design in October, December. And having that would then allow us to do public input process, council feedback in action, January, March of calendar year 2014, in fiscal year 14. This will require site plan and contract approvals, and so the purple represents a second phase of public input and dialogue and going back to bid. So in that January-March timeframe is where council would then be able to give the go-no-good go, because you will have seen some A&E work, some preliminary architectural work to put this into more meet and concept, which council has requested. And then before we proceed and go farther into contract, we would have reaction and revisement. And then you see the second bid phase after we have design, and then the construction, which would be phased and sequenced, so we could do search space to move staff around as we did either the HVAC or the central front entrance, which would give us workspace until we did the rear, and then the internal movement. Because, for example, as I said earlier, police would come down here for dispatch and EOC, and then investigators would have more room into dispatch, and then we wouldn't be taking witnesses through staff space. So there'll be internal configurations. And at the end of the day, the police double their space to about a 12,000 police-sized, 12,000-square-foot police station, and about 56% of this new construction is all related to public safety. The last page of this is just what you saw in January, which is a recommended reserve facility planning, so we can plan for the years 10, 15, and 20.
We're just going to have questions, but I've had one request to take a quick five-minute break, so why don't we come back at 10:35?
Over closer to Mr. Tarter is 1958, and that's the west wing and the center part of, which has chambers. And then to the right is 1986, when the east wing was added in. And so the last addition and major work to City Hall was 27 years ago, and we still are operating, or Kathy Allen's operating, our 1957 boilers and the 1986 HVAC unit. So thank you. I just wanted to give you all that perspective, since they're hanging in the east wing first floor in an area that most people don't traverse.
Great. Thank you, Cindy. So I had a quick opportunity to just talk with Vice Mayor Snyder about how to move us forward on the City Hall and general government facility side. And I think we're going to have to come back. I think Vice Mayor Snyder's identified two areas that we need to focus in on when we do come back, but I think we, given the late hour, we do need to come back to these very important issues. And I'm going to turn it over to Vice Mayor Snyder to highlight the two areas that we were able to identify.
Yeah. I think really that it's not the critical work within the existing footprint. It's the addition in the back and the addition in the front. And it appears that we're adding parking spaces, so why do we want to add parking spaces? Are we, in fact, doing that?
There would be an increase of 40 parking spaces, and that's based on our space studies. At peak times, with community center Cherry Hill and inadequate parking now at the library, we have a shortfall of parking.
I guess if we're in a position or in a time period when city government is shrinking, why would we add more parking spaces? You partly answered that, but I'm still not persuaded yet about that. And there is this notion that we could use various city functions to help with the downtown development. And so putting a lot of money into this building beyond essentials, in that case, would be wasting money. So I think we do need to look at not just where we are today, but where we'll be in five years and 10 years. So I guess that's, I'd like some more study, and I'd like some more work on that. Because in talking to experts, it's, a number of communities have used public facilities to help jumpstart redevelopment projects. And the question is, is that in the offing? And if so, it doesn't make sense to pour a lot of money into this building, assuming that all the functions are going to stay here.
So I think there's two points that we got to, just to reiterate, two points that we have to focus in on. One is the expansion in the rear, which is 3 million-plus. And the other expansion is the undergrounding expansion. And whether that needs to get done, specifically the parking and what the consequences of not funding that are. We seem to have managed the way we have, and I'm just wondering if there's ways that we can build a smaller, secure salary port with one or two vehicles going in and out that's still secure and does the job. But I think we need to come back to this during this budget cycle. So I don't know what other council members thinking is on that. Mr. Kieran?
Two things. One, it is awfully late, and there's a lot of detail, so it would probably, to get a clearer head on that. However, if I'm not mistaken, we have legal requirements, and that we're not properly protecting the courts. And so I don't think we can wait to start to study and develop public spaces and so forth, because we're already in violation, is my impression, of the safety requirements for judges, et cetera. So I think we have to move quickly.
Yeah, I don't, certainly the Vice Mayor can speak for himself on this. I don't think it was the core, because that would be part of the footprint of the core things we would do. It would be focusing in on the expansion on the rear, which isn't directly related to the courts, and the underground parking, which isn't directly related to the courts either.
Just to, Dave, is that what you were referring to?
Yes, primarily.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah.
The... The underground parking does have some court functions, because that's the secure entrance in.
I understand that. I mean, we had a discussion with the chief about it, about how some operations that happen rarely could happen through that facility that are tied to the courts. So I don't want to say that there's no tie-in to the courts. But again, in a difficult fiscal environment where we're having to make decisions and where we're allocating resources, I do think that we need to come back to this.
Can I clarify if, when we're talking about the front, are we talking about the front expansion that creates a central entrance, that's a secure court entrance, ADA accessible and wayfinding? Or are we just talking about the parking?
My principal focus is on the parking.
Okay. That helps to clarify. One of the things that I would...
To clarify that even further to Mr. Kalin's point, I think we're trying to focus in on the needs versus, you know, the tiering of needs, if you will. And certainly, the securing the court functions, securing the evidence rooms, I would place in the top buckets. The parking may not fit into that, and we may need to redeploy some of those funds elsewhere into the community. Is where I'm getting at. I mean, we are asking a lot of our staff, I understand. We're asking a lot of our citizens between stormwater and potential tax increases. I think we need to seriously give some thought to doing other core functions that people move to the city for, in addition to schools, which are certainly one other piece of it. Mr. Kieran?
Certainly understand and agree that we have to be as careful as possible with the expenditure of limited funds. But make no mistake, what the city is asking for is peanuts compared to the school capital requirement. I mean, schools dwarf this.
I'm not disagreeing with that. All right. Council members, does that seem like a way forward? And I'm gonna ask that this item, next time it comes up, do the city manager that it come up on top of the agenda rather than at the bottom of the agenda? So I think we need to list this as one of the drivers, since it would be for fourteen, not some outer ear that we can sort of move along. Okay? All right. So Wyatt, if you can give some thought about when we can put this on the calendar.
It's the eleventh, doesn't it?
For Mr. LaConde, you know, doesn't have to provide it now, but if you summed up the next five years of expected capital projects, debt issuance, I'd like to see what that total number is and what the amount is that's going to the schools of that total amount. I have a feeling we're entering the numbers that are normally associated with galaxies and other, you know, and other types of measures when we add all that up. And again, I think the schools are the immense, the largest single proportion of that, so I don't want to come down hard on the city and then for very little impact if it doesn't really address what our funding limitations are.
No, and that certainly is not my intent of what I was suggesting. What I'm suggesting is that we've got the school piece that we're gonna have to tackle that's sort of on one track, and then we've got the city government piece that we're gonna have to tackle and make sure that on both sides, we're expending resources as we need to be. And I think we've just... My view is that we've paid a lot of attention and focused in on the school CIPs of late, given the QSCABs and other projects that are currently in the works and how they all fit together between Cherry Street, Mount Daniel, and TJ, that we need to start focusing in on some of the City Hall issues. And I know we've got new council members that are not necessarily as familiar with this as some others, so I want to make sure we have enough time. Mr. LaConde?
Thank you. I just want to say thank you to the mayor and the vice mayor for those comments, and I hope Mr. Kalin will not be too shocked to know that I agree with him about the importance of our long-term capital planning, including a fair share for municipal needs as well as schools' needs.
So in terms of schedule, we have a regular session meeting next Monday night, and then the following Thursday is meant to be police and then preliminary markup. And then the following Monday is scheduled to be a quick run-through utilities and then final markup. We're gonna not have the mayor and the vice mayor at that Monday meeting, so I think we need to talk about our schedule.
That will probably improve the likelihood of a successful outcome.
I'm sorry, could you say that again? Neither the mayor or the vice mayor are gonna be at the meeting on?
Monday, the fifteenth. So not the regular session, the three days, I mean, four days from now, but ten days from now, the final markup session, that was scheduled before. And so we could either proceed or... But I think there's a desire to have a discussion about meeting on Tuesday, the sixteenth, as opposed to Monday, the fifteenth, for that work session. I think we'll still not have the vice mayor if we did that.
I'd business travel that week.
Yeah.
I can be on the sixteenth. I've just got a conflict that came up on the fifteenth. So the council would entertain meeting on the sixteenth? Can we plan on the sixteenth, unless there's objections? Wyatt, if you don't mind just sending our...
We'll send that out by email. Okay.
We'll go there from there.
Now, for the markup process, what we traditionally...
One other point, just as far as when to bring back the City Hall piece. It may dovetail well with the police department.
Yeah, it would.
So we could probably do it then. But I think the key thing is, we want to make sure that we have time to discuss the CIP piece.
All right. So we could lead off with that and then go into the police operations and then do our preliminary markup?
Yep.
And everybody be very fresh for the preliminary markup.
Yeah, and I think we need to start discussing what the preliminary markup is gonna look like. I started mentioning at the last meeting that we had, and that's, we need to start talking dollars and cents and what we're doing with the tax rate. So if there's adjustments that need to be made, we provide staff direction, because they'll need that time to do what it is that we're gonna end up asking them. So my ask of the council would be by our... What's the meeting date, Wyatt? Would it be for the preliminary mark?
So that'd be for next Thursday.
And I would actually push council members a little bit more, just so we have time to think about it. I sort of threw out my tentative range a couple, you know, a couple of meetings ago. So perhaps even by Monday, if council members can begin to think about what their range is, we don't need to discuss it, but just so we begin to get a sense and we start informing each other of where we're at, even as early as Monday, then by Thursday, we can begin to actually have the discussions of where we're at and provide staff direction, rather than waiting Thursday to talk about numbers and we're sliding again towards the date that we have to make a decision. You all can say, no, I'm out of my mind, but...
Well, I'll just note that Monday night is a light agenda. We'll have the public hearings, but there's only one item on consent for council to act on. And so, you know, conceivably, there'd be time while the council is together to have that discussion.
And the discussion Monday that I'm proposing would not be, okay, you know, you want X number for the tax rate, so where are you gonna cut? But at least to have that discussion of what people are thinking as far as ranges, so then by Thursday, we can begin to have the discussions of where cuts are gonna happen or where a remedy is gonna be raised. Does that make sense to council members? I mean, if anybody has an objection about starting to lay out what their range is by Monday, you know, that would be a good time to let...
No, it sounds fine. I just wanted to ask, would we get data on Q1 revenues anytime this month, January, February, March, performance numbers before the budget? So would that be Monday or Thursday or twenty-second or...
You can have them on Thursday.
Okay. Thanks.
This gets back to, harkens back to a whole issue when we do budgets. I asked for the CIP numbers, you know, cumulative for the five years, but in the end of the day, we also, if we could have this year's request and what you see going forward, rough estimates, I understand, for the next five years in terms of expenditures and revenue. I think you've already done that. If you could reissue that with the CIP numbers, so we can get an idea of when we're looking at cuts or increases in revenue, what the magnitudes of that are gonna be, have it fresh in front of us. So just taking from existing data if you already have it.
It's the gap chart.
For the next five years, we can see what it means, what we do this year and how it will affect going forward or what we expect to happen going forward.
Richard, if you can get that out to council members before Monday's meeting?
You got it.
We always have them.
But I don't think we've seen it with the transfer, the most recent transfer request. I don't think it's gone out since then. I don't recall that it has.
No.
All right.
Just one information question that I know you know the answer to off the top of your head. Average appreciated value of a property in the city this time around was what, three-point...
Two-point-nine.
Nine percent? Okay, so standard.
Two-point-nine.
Sorry, two-point-nine. Two-point-nine, okay, thanks.
All right. Anything else, council members?
I have one more thing, I'm sorry.
Mr. Kalin?
Is there any reason why we have the Mount Daniel expansion or new site considered? Why is that still there? The new site, I thought was clearly moving forward on the Mount Daniel.
At the January meeting, there was questions to bring it back for follow-up concessions, so I just put that slide back in there. Council verbally seemed to indicate that that wasn't the one.
And apparently, what the superintendent said, that they were not considering that right now either.
What was the last question that I asked, because you all were talking with the neighbors and the supervisor and so forth, about Mount Daniel?
Yeah, those meetings haven't been scheduled yet.
Okay.
All right, if I can get a motion to adjourn?
Move to adjourn.
If I can get a second, Mr. Kalin on the second. All in favor, say aye. Aye. Any opposed, any abstentions? Or adjourned? Thank you, everybody.